The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everybody. As you will observe, or at least those in the hearing room will observe, I am not in the hearing room today. I am participating in the hearing from the Sydney Hearing Room. There are circumstances that require me to participate remotely. I welcome everybody who is following this, the second day of the 30th Public Hearing of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. This hearing is concerned with guardianship substituted and supported decision-making. We commence with an acknowledgement of country. The Royal Commission and the commissioners acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land upon which the hearing at Holm Bush is taking place today, the Wongal people. And we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation on whose lands I am participating in this hearing. We acknowledge and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge all First Nations people giving evidence of this hearing, as well as those First Nations people who are following the hearing, either in the hearing room or via the webcast. Yes, Miss Easton?
Good morning, Commissioners and good morning to everyone following the broadcast and here in the room. I want to start just by outlining what to expect with the evidence today and the way in which the hearing will be conducted this morning. The first witnesses to appear this morning will do so by way of pre-recorded evidence, and I'll introduce the evidence shortly. They'll then be followed by Suzanne Nunn, who will be here with us in the hearing room, and then she'll give her evidence here in person. After that, we will adjourn for morning tea. And when we resume, we've pre-recorded some further evidence from Julie Borey. So we'll play her recording. After that, we will hear from a panel of witnesses from QAI, an advocacy group based in Queensland. The hearing this afternoon will also be an opportunity for the commissioners to hear from the Queensland Public Trustee and the Queensland Public Guardian. All being well, it will be a long day, and I hope that we'll be able to finish the evidence around 4:30 this afternoon. So Commissioners, can I start by way of introducing the Namok family? Commissioners and Chair, a public hearing 25 conducted in Alice Springs earlier this year, you heard evidence from the Namok family about their experiences accessing the NDIS in the Torres Strait. Later this year, between the 1st and the 4th of November, council-assisting Avellina Tarago travelled to meet members of the Namok family in Thursday Island and in Cairns to talk about their experience navigating the guardianship and administration systems in Queensland. Their evidence at public hearing 25 highlighted the challenges of accessible travel and accommodation in the Torres Strait, which the Royal Commission staff were able to observe firsthand on their recent trip. The travel to Thursday Island from Cairns involves a flight from Cairns to Horn Island in a small propeller plane, then a connecting bus to the jetty, and then a ferry over to Thursday Island. And you can see from the photos on the screen that the ferry is not wheelchair-accessible and nor are the houses on Thursday Island, which are traditionally built on stilts. I'll just check that you can see those photographs on the screen now. We've also shown you a photograph of one of the family members' house on Thursday Island. I understand this is typical of the houses on Thursday Island built on stilts. The pre-recorded evidence that we will play for you shortly this morning comprises of videos filmed with Bakoi Namok and Bernard Namok Jr. on Thursday Island on the 2nd of November. It also includes a video filmed on the 4th of November in Cairns with Bakoi, Bernard and Simeon Namok. In these videos, you will hear Ms. Tarago refer to Bakoi as Mama Bakoi and to Simeon by his nickname Boise. You will also hear Bakoi refer to her late husband as Bernard Senior, and he passed away when Bakoi's four children were young, leaving her as a sole parent. In January this year, Bakoi was appointed as the guardian and administrator of Simeon, or Boise, her youngest son. Simeon, or Boise, suffered a stroke last year and now lives with cognitive disability and mobility challenges. He currently lives in shared disability accommodation in Cairns, but he has expressed his wish to come home to Thursday Island. After a period of being non-verbal, Simeon is slowly regaining some speech and is able to communicate his basic needs to family members who he trusts and who understand his body language and facial expressions. Simeon is particularly close to his sister Knessha, who was unfortunately unable to join the family for the Royal Commission's visit due to flight cancellations from Marbouag Island in the Torres Strait where she currently lives. So Ms. Tarago spoke to Knessha over the Zoom call on the 3rd of November, and the audio recording and transcript of that conversation is included in the tender bundle. The recording of evidence on Thursday Island did pose some technical issues for us, and you will hear that the sound quality is poor in some sections, particularly with the opening minute of the video, so please bear with us. You'll also hear some background noise, party passing motor boats and fishing boats at the beginning of the video, the sounds of the waves hitting the shore, and a very Australian soundscape of very large cicadas and bird calls. Can I also say that English is not the first language of Bakoi, Bernard or Simeon, and there's parts of the recording where Bernard assists with communication? The video that we'll play in a moment begins with the discussion between Ms. Tarago, Bakoi and Bernard Jr. And you'll see Bakoi sitting on the left in a beautiful island red dress. In the middle is her son Bernard Jr. He's wearing a cap. And on the left is council-assisting Ms. Tarago, also wearing a beautiful blue island dress, which I'm told she purchased on Thursday Island. The last segment of the video is taken in Cairns, where the Royal Commission was able to meet Simeon along with Bakoi and Bernard. And Simeon is seated between Ms. Tarago on the right and Bakoi on the left. So Commissioners, I'll just put up the content warning. There is a lot of personal information and for First Nations people following the hearing, discussions that may cause people to want to reach out and seek some support and assistance. Thank you, Commissioners. So Mama Bakoi, we're here. Where are we today?
Here with this place where you grew up, called Tamwai Town.
What's this island that you're on? What's the name of this island?
Yeah, Tamwai Town. This island, but it's at the back of the island, it's called Tamwai Town. Suburb at the back of the island.
And today I wanted to talk about your journey with the guardianship. I remember earlier this year, we sat down and we were talking about Boise for the NDIS, and we had that hearing. When I was in Alice Springs and you were in Cairns. But now, we're going to sit down and talk about the guardianship. Can you tell me, when did you first hear of that word guardianship? Was that last year, or did you know about guardianship before that?
Well, it comes down to that word guardianship. And we just talked to my family and the way I grew up. And Bennett, he was my little baby, late. He was two, and Simeon was five months when he passed away. So from that time onwards, like I have to make the decision for my family as a sole parent, with the help of my family, brothers and sisters, aunties, uncles. Like when it comes to anything, helpful thing, the family come together, they make decisions. Family, like it boils down to them. All, all of them, till today and day. When they want to do something, they ask me, and I always tell them to like, you know, it's good that white, like that law and our law, customary law, but it's the same thing, but you know, it's different. And again, when you come, when you try to talk for your rights and what you've been, grow up with, you know, that island lifestyle of things. And sometimes like the thing now, guardianship, I went through with Boise now. But like, I didn't have that understanding.
Because in island culture, guardianship, there are a lot of protocols on who can speak for who, and that's something that you already had in the family, and you were that person, yeah. So culturally, there's certain things that have to be done, but then you've got this different Western way as well, that you had to understand how that works. And did you find that Western way was a little bit confusing sometimes? And did you have someone who helped you understand that Western way?
No, no. It's a limited knowledge, yes.
And so when Boise was in hospital around, it was November last year in Cairns?
Yeah, we flew up from Townsville, 4th of November, to Townsville to Cairns. That's when everything, like hit me around that time.
Yeah, yeah. So it was a very stressful time because Boise had been taken from the island to Townsville. And then had surgery?
Yeah. For six weeks, you have to wear that helmet. Like it's emotional and like to sit there and watch, try to put on a brave face for him and like, and the doctors and shoot up with all them. A boy coming and daddy doctor coming, you know, all them things. You didn't get that support of like, come and tell us what's going on. Really like, if he do come out from that stroke.
Yeah, yeah, that stroke. And he was in coma?
Yeah.
And so then from Townsville, on the 4th of November, came up to Cairns. And so you've gone to this meeting that you thought was to tell you about Boise and how he was going to go with his condition? But there were a lot of other people that come and sort of joined us? And lots of information?
Yes.
Was that easy for you to understand with lots of different things?
No.
It was like it was rushed.
It's rushed and when we had that conference, asked Boise. Because they asked video. Confer that disability, I think, later. She asked Boise, Boise loved to stay with family. And we said, yes, you want to be with, live with family, they can find a place in Cairns for him. But everything was really spashed up in there. That's the time when [bleep] that's in now. With all them forms. You mentioned about the guardianship, and I tried telling him like, we don't do that thing, like in our culture, we only go like, we go to like, centre league, talk on their behalf. You don't need like, power of attorney because I'm the mother, I'm still alive, and I talk in behalf of my children, so.
So you didn't need a paper to tell you you could talk for family?
Yeah.
For culturally, you don't need a piece of paper?
Culture.
And so [bleep] you mentioned is the social workers? And do you remember when you first spoke to her about the paperwork for the Western guardianship?
They come in and ask me, rush me to, I'll get all the things done. They do get things and show, asks me, they try to get everything done.
Did anyone explain what you had to do?
No.
So did you feel, when you were given those papers that first time, that you could sign it? Or did you feel worried about signing it?
I feel worried about it because I don't know what I'm going to sign it for. Like it's give the ownership authority to [bleep] to move like forward. Like I'm okay with it, but really I'm not okay with that.
So you needed someone to explain it better? And give you more time so you could think?
To understand, we are coming from a cultural aspect, cultural side of things, tradition.
I just, sorry. Is that social worker, is she Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander?
Ancient.
So did you feel that she understood culturally what you were talking about? And that's really important to you, for someone to understand culture? And when you sat down that time, that first time with the papers, was there a liaison officer?
No. Because I keep on telling her that you come because it's your job. You come with all them things for us, but you have to respect where I'm coming from, where my, I stand in my culture and my tradition.
And even with the language? So if she's explaining things to you, are they, those Western words for that document, is that easy to understand all the time? Or do you sometimes need a bit more time to read through?
Yeah, a bit more time to read through.
And maybe sit down with family to explain sometime? And this also was important for you to talk with Boise about what he wants?
Because at that time, he couldn't understand like what, like, because of the sickness he had at that time.
So that was that first meeting? And then Bernard mentioned there was another meeting in courtyard?
Yeah, that's the last one, I think, when she was [bleep]. I wonder what's going on with her now? The last day of, she's working on our case. Yeah, she was told like, my last day, I'm on, I got, I got, give it to three o'clock, sign this paper. That's the time, and Bennett should have come in.
How did that make you feel?
I'm angry because trying to force mom to sign a form that mom didn't understand. And I told mom, like, you don't have to sign if you don't understand.
And no lawyers? You didn't have any independence?
It wasn't in a private setting. It was in public, in front of the cafe. There was people sitting around us and people walking next to us. There was a pathway that comes in and out of the hospital, and we were sitting there.
So talking about very private things in the public space?
Signing form on the bench, which, yeah, the setting.
And in the last hearing, Mama Namok, you mentioned about how Torres Strait Islander people are very quiet. Culturally, having those conversations in the open cafe area, how does that make you feel? Do you feel safe?
Exposed, because people were wondering what we were talking about. And there was people that we knew that was around. So it wasn't really comfortable in that area. Like could have taken us to a different room. Yeah, but feel exposed.
So after signing the application for guardian, you went to the tribunal and there was a telephone conversation with the QCAT? And you and Knessha were on the QCAT call? And do you remember being told what you had to do? Did you understand all of those things that the tribunal was saying? Or was it sometimes a little difficult to understand?
Like, yes, difficult like, unlike talking fast, yeah. You didn't really understand what you talked to fast, yeah.
And do you think the tribunal understood that you might have needed interpreter, or not so much interpreter, but someone to explain it the way you needed it to be explained? Like slower, or to have family there with you to take time to understand? Do you think he understood that?
I don't think so, yeah, you need to just talk with him.
Because I think if he would have, then there would have been somebody there with mom and Knessha.
And very hard on the telephone? Is it important culturally that you sit down like we're here today?
I like to do things face to face, yeah.
So you know who you're talking?
Get their vibe.
Yeah. And a lot of people in community are the same, that it's important to be face to face. And with the tribunal, did you have a legal representative with you?
No.
And did you have an Indigenous liaison officer?
No.
And for Indigenous liaison officer, you said earlier it's important to have them. Should the tribunal have one too?
They should, they get all that?
No.
Yeah, well, they should have one when they're dealing like with our people, yeah.
And that's because there's an understanding about culture?
Yes.
And also give you time to understand things? And involve family the right way? So if there were important things that the tribunal needed from you, you might need some support to understand what those things are? And maybe have someone sit down with you, or if they can refer you to someone?
Yeah.
Is there anything that you were able to read beforehand? Any pamphlet or online about the tribunal?
No.
So access is not very easy for you up here? And there's no tribunal up here? No, so you can't go into the office and ask? And while Boise's in Cairns and you're up here, if you have to make decisions about his centre league or things like that, or with the accommodation, is it harder when you're up here, or is it easier in Cairns?
It's easier up here because we're only at one centre league, everybody deal with. And yeah, I can go in and they know, like they know we, everybody here. And that issue, like I feel comfortable talking to them. As in Cairns, like they go expect like a letter or from doctors and everything proper for them, to give them to, yeah.
And what happens when Boise wants something and a decision has to be made? And how do you talk with Boise about what he might want? What decisions he might want to be a part of? Is it just a telephone conversation? Or do you have to go to Cairns to sit down with him?
Telephone, yeah, but only can, almost can.
Sometimes you go down like for appointments, but mom flies down to Cairns for that? And for a couple of days, go to that appointment with Boise? If it's a big appointment, important appointments, mom runs down for that.
And so you're talking with him about his life and the things he likes and to make sure that you understand when you're making decisions, what he might want as well?
I go buy stuff for Boise.
Yeah, David, and so, yeah.
To make sure he can achieve what he wants?
Yeah.
And also family too, like they ring mom and ask what Boise wants? And what kind of food he likes? And then they buy food and drop it at Boise.
So everyone knows that? And that's all part of cultural protocol?
Cultural protocol, yeah.
It's like guardianship too, like it's not only mom, it's the whole family, her mom. That kind of supports Boise and what he wants to.
And that Western way doesn't understand?
No, those in conflict like that, and you try to tell them, and yeah.
And is it frustrating?
Because the Western way only comes down to mom, but the cultural way, it involves the immediate family and also the extended too, that close to mom that can make, that for the support to mom and to Boise.
And then like, they know, like in our culture, you have to wait for your 21st. That's the time and the key over. In life decision, you have to make, you have to choose, you know, the right path, right way to go. But as one parent, we still are like override. Like I tell them, when I'm down under their sixth feet, then you can make ownership, everything, guardianship for yourself. But at the moment, if I'm alive here, I'm still here, give advice, yeah.
And that's everyone in community, that's the protocol through all the island and expectation culturally, it's part of who you are, you know those rules. Do you think that Western way could learn something from how things are done on the island?
Yes, run together, the law.
So the proper way?
Yeah, the proper way and understanding, come down for sacred.
And is it the case that Boise will come back to you or come back to Bernard or come back to Nisha to ask for things because he doesn't feel comfortable in the Western way?
Probably ask Nisha.
Probably Nisha, I get along with Nisha.
And then Nisha will ring mom, and mom will ring me in Cairns.
Yeah.
And something that we talked about in the last hearing when we were talking NDIS was that Boise's very shy in person and more likely to just talk to family and might just agree with other people?
Yeah, I think he feels comfortable with Nisha, yeah.
So when outside people come in and ask you questions, when you've been there and those other people asking things of Simeon, does he talk to them or does he come through family to talk to them?
Yes, yeah.
So when he's there on his own, is he more likely to make those decisions? Or is he more likely to wait for family to talk?
Like when we were there, like, they would ask him questions, but he would look at them. Like when we, when we were there, like, they would ask him questions, but he would look at them.
Yeah.
But then they'd look at mum and Nisha.
Yeah.
And then Nisha will kind of have to break it down.
Break it down for him.
To, to Boise, what they're talking about, but what if you think that, uh, when. You or Nisha know they were, like, how would he?
Yeah, maybe just go with the flow.
So he's more likely just to say yes?
Yes, just to get the thing over and done, yes, just go ahead and do it.
Otherwise, if Nisha was there with him. It'd look at Nisha and then Nisha would break it down to.
Body language.
Yeah, because Nisha can tell his body language.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then, um, Nisha would break it down to Boise. And then Boise would be comfortable in answering what they want. Yeah, and if they're not there, then he'd probably say yes.
And that is something that he would do, even from small boy before. Family first and see, um. How he should respond. And that's part of that community as a family and make decisions. That's all the way he is, yeah, and the way he makes decisions. Is there anything that you want to talk about for that guardianship? You know, to tell the big bosses that would be listening, what needs to change?
Just give them that, um, one of the things that they rights to.
Uh, like. From, like, from their experience of the guardianship, like, for them big bosses, like, what do you want to see for them? For any changes that you've experienced, like. Any changes that the empire would do to fix that issues and problems you've got through?
Worker, indigenous on like.
Have a support worker.
Yeah, um, okay, social worker, something.
Hmm.
And the liaison officer.
Liaison officer.
Yeah, liaison officer to work in that, um, area, guardianship. So they understand, yeah.
Some, have more understanding about.
About the cultural protocol and practices of, um, indigenous people there.
So to have that as part of that hospital experience as well as the QCAT.
Yeah.
So that they have someone that has cultural understandings.
Hmm.
And can help guide you.
Also explain to, um, explain what forms. They, they give to family to sign, explain properly what they, what they would, what forms, what they was gonna sign.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And what about for. Other people in community that might just speak Yulplato, so language. And might not speak English very well or might have trouble understanding. Should there be interpreters that can speak Yulplato?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Mama and Bernard. So thank you, Namok family, for coming today. And I'm here with Boise. And Mama Namok and Bernard. Um. It's good to meet you in person. We got the, uh, earlier this year for the hearing. And, um. This time, instead of talking about the NDIS, we're talking about guardianship. And mum is your guardian at the moment. So when, um, the guardianship process happened, I spoke with mum and Bernard and Kanesha. About, um. Helping you with decision making and that started at hospital.
Yeah.
And so mum, Kanesha sat down with the social worker. Um, and fill out some paperwork to help you with your decision making for.
Yeah.
Health or for, um, finances, so for paying bills. Um, by credit, food, rent, things like that. Um, until you're ready. Um, but one thing that we were talking about yesterday. Uh, Mama and Bernard, was about cultural protocol. And that for Torres Strait Islander people. Um, mum makes decisions for family, is that right?
Yeah.
And that's something that everyone in community understands for each family. Yeah? Um, and that's something that you want too.
Yeah.
Now, um, back when you were at, at hospital. Um. Before you went to hospital, mum helped you with decisions as well. About your health and, and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's something that has happened for a long time, not just now. Um, and now since hospital, she's helping you with your accommodation. Um. When mum and Bernard and Kanesha are not at the accommodation. Do you feel comfortable, um, talking to the people there and that they listen?
No.
Sometime?
Like when you talk for example, like, oh, listen, when you, when you wonder when them do.
Yeah.
Um, and what about when they don't listen? Do you have to ask for family to help you?
Yeah.
And that's because family know you.
Yeah.
And know the things you like. Yeah. Um, and you're very close with Kanesha?
Yeah.
And when I spoke with her yesterday, she said. That when she sees you, she can tell by your face, how you're feeling. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so she knows to maybe ask in a different way to help you get the things that you need. Yeah. Do you think that, um. Places like accommodation or in community. It's important to have, for you to have family to support you, to get the things you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you would like, um, if someone was listening. And you weren't with Boise. What you would like to happen if, if he couldn't communicate what he wanted? Should they contact you? Should they contact Kanesha and Bernard to help support, um, Boise? Um, or should they make decisions without family?
No, we still want them to contact me, just like today, he was refused to take his, um, tablet. Then I, lucky I was there and just encouraged him to, yeah, yeah. Still contact us so we can have that communication with them, yeah, communicate with them, yeah.
And it's very important, um, in island culture.
Yeah.
And for you as mum.
Hmm.
That, that communication is open.
Yeah.
We got to see where you grew up as well this week, which was nice, yeah.
All the good day, I might please. I'm boy landing.
Hmm.
We were sitting there.
Look them dingy.
Hmm, you've been, you've come from Tia yesterday.
Stop the one eye hotel.
Yeah.
Good to see your old school, the school then.
We've got a house, town by town.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Up hill, you miss out, grand.
Grand. Hmm.
So it was nice to see, you know, what you call home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, commissioners for, uh, watching that video and a very, um, significant thank you to the Namok family for. Working with the Royal Commission over a number of days. Uh, commissioners, I tendered that material into evidence. There are a number of, uh, documents and videos that accompany this evidence. If you could mark them, exhibit thirty point zero three two through to thirty point zero four one. And that will include, uh, various documents and the photographs that we showed earlier. Commissioners, I.
Yes, well, tho- those documents, uh, together with the video can be admitted into evidence and given the markings, um, that have indicated.
Commissioner, our next witness is Suzanne Nunn, and I'd just, if, if with the commissioner's indulgence. Just take a very short adjournment of five minutes so I can make sure that the room is reconstituted and Ms. Nunn's ready.
Yes, all right, we'll take a short adjournment, thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Eastman.
I'll just wait for the other commissioners to come in, they're here now. So, uh, commissioners, the next witness is Suzanne Nunn.
Ms. Nunn, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission. Uh, I'm sorry I'm not in that room personally, but I'm in the Sydney hearing room. And as you will be aware, um, we have Commissioner McEwan and Commissioner Ryan in the hearing room with you. Uh, we're grateful to you for providing a statement to the Royal Commission and for being prepared to come to the Royal Commission today to give, uh, evidence. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of a member of the Office of Solicitor assisting. Uh, they will administer the affirmation to you and I think they are located just on your right, thank you.
I will read you the affirmation, at the end, please say yes or I do. Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nunn, I'll now ask Ms. Eastman to ask you some questions, thank you.
Thank you, so can I confirm that you are Suzanne Nunn?
I am.
And you prefer to be known as Sue rather than Suzanne, is that right? And you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated the eighteenth of November this year?
Yes.
And you've had a chance to read over that statement?
I have.
Are there any amendments or corrections that you wish to make?
No.
And are the contents of the statement otherwise true and correct?
They are.
Right, thank you for your statement. Now, you, uh, want to talk to the Royal Commission about some of the experiences in your family. And in particular, your two brothers. You come from a very large family, your dad was a police officer and your mum was, as we might sort of say these days, a stay at home mum. And you were one of six kids, is that right?
It is, I'm the only girl.
The, and the only.
Says a lot about my personality.
Add that to your statement. It might shed some light.
It does.
And i- in terms of reflecting back on your family life and your time as a family. As a very close family, you had parents who were very dedicated to all of your brothers and to yourself, is that right?
That is true, yes.
And, uh, that, um. Family tradition has passed down to you and you are fiercely protective of your brothers.
Yes.
That protection is driven by a very strong bent on social justice. And you are not a person who takes well to bullying, you have a deep dislike of bullying. If you feel that, um, something is unfair or unjust, then that drives your determination. To defend and also to seek justice for others.
Particularly in relation to my family and my brothers.
Can I ask you to introduce us to your family members who are not here for reasons that will become apparent? So shall we start with your little brother, your youngest brother and the youngest member of the family? And he's Jono, tell us about him.
Um, I always say my little brother, but Jono's fifty-five, um, he is delightful. Um, he's a happy-go-lucky man, he loves to be the centre of attention. Um, he likes to make jokes, he likes to pull faces and make people laugh. Um, he has been living in supported accommodation in Queensland now for. Probably close to twenty-one years in the same house.
He lives with disability?
He lives, oh, I'm sorry, um, he has Down syndrome, he was born with Down syndrome. Um, so for many years he lived with mum and dad at home and then in his early thirties. They decided that, they knew they weren't going to be around forever and they had to make alternate arrangements whilst there was still time.
I, I want to ask you some questions about that in a moment, but just in terms of Jono's life, he lived with your parents for a long time.
Mm-hmm, until his early thirties.
And during that time that he lived with your parents. Was his life one where he was able to make choices and have control over his day-to-day activities, what he did, where he went?
Uh, yes, yes, so, but that was all obviously coordinated with mum and dad and driven by mum and dad. Jono's predominantly non-verbal, he does, he can speak, but he chooses not to most of the time. Um, he indicates his choices. Um, he will pick something if he's presented with pitches or he will say words or indicate what he wants to do. But he does, I guess, need some support, um, in that regard.
When you reflect back on the time that he lived with your parents. Uh, would you describe the relationship between your parents and Jono as one where. Your parents supported him to make decisions and think through problems?
Absolutely, um, they acted in his best interests, they acted in everybody's best interests. Um, they just wanted Jono to live a full, happy, enjoyable life. They were obviously also very protective of him. Um, but they always acted in, with his happiness in mind.
So as your parents, um, became older, they started to think to the future and they were concerned about. What would be the arrangements for Jono if they were no longer around? So when Jono was about thirty-three, your parents, as part of this planning, uh, made some arrangements for him, what did they do?
They, um, decided that, um, it would be best if he was. Um, in a supported accommodation, um, situation. Um, it was a really, really difficult decision for them, they agonised over that for years. And I know that they really suffered a lot of guilt and a lot of grief in that process. Um. Handing over their son to somebody else and, and letting that go, it was terribly difficult for them. Um, but I can, the, the accommodation where John is now, so it's a, it's supported, it's still, it's a still arrangement. Um, he's with one other resident, um, it's very stable. Um, and we're lucky in that, um, it is such a small house. Um, he has carers who've been with him for, one carer who's been with him for eighteen years, another two who've been with him for fifteen years. So very stable, calm, happy.
He's never had a guardian appointed for him?
No, he hasn't.
But he has had, uh, uh, an administrator appointed in relation to his financial affairs, is that right?
That is right.
And how did the administrator come to be appointed? Were you involved in that or is that something your parents attended to?
That's something my parents attended to, um, at the time I was living in Sydney, I lived in Sydney for sixteen years. Um, and they decided to do that and we'll come to that part of the story because. My other brother Terry had also been placed under administration. Um, and up to that point. And up to that point in time, they'd had a fairly positive experience. They felt that, well, I was living in Sydney, I was away. My brothers all had young families. We all had demanding jobs. So realistically, they felt that that was the best option. And like I said, they'd had positive experiences.
So your parents applied to the tribunal at the time for the public trustee to be Jono's administrator and that occurred in two thousand and three when he was thirty-six years old?
Correct.
Now, just, and I know we'll jump around time-wise, but fast-forwarding a little bit, it's the case, isn't it? If we move to November twenty twenty, that one of your brothers and you applied to the Queensland Tribunal for the two of you to become Jono's financial administrators?
It was July, actually. But yes, it was the case. So we are jointly or separately acting as administrators.
So that involved you going to the tribunal?
Correct.
And the tribunal agreed to effectively revoke the public trustee's arrangement and appoint you and your brother to be Jono's financial administrators, is that right?
That's correct.
And you've set out in the statement the way in which you discharge that duty in terms of addressing Jono's best interests, but also consulting and talking to him about big decisions. You're also John's NDIS plan nominee?
Correct.
Did you need to be the financial administrator to take on that role of being the NDIS nominee?
No, I did not.
Right. Now, can I talk about your other brother, who was your eldest brother? And I know it's been a bit of time now, but we express our condolences for your loss. And is it okay if I ask you some questions about Terry?
Absolutely.
So he was your eldest brother. And what happened to him when he was about twenty-nine years old?
Terry was involved in a car accident. They were coming back from a long weekend away. He was in a car with his girlfriend, sitting in the back seat, and a couple of them knew in the front, and they were hit by a drunk driver. Terry was the only one to survive the accident. His girlfriend was killed instantly. Yeah.
That meant that he lived the rest of his life with an acquired brain injury?
It did.
And that had a very profound impact, both on his quality of life?
It did. So he hit his head in the front there. It affected, it didn't affect his cognition, but it affected his ability to plan and organise. It affected his short-term memory. It affected some other aspects of his life. And also as he aged, he started having absent seizures. He started having TIA's. So it did profoundly affect his health.
And you've described in the statement Terry's life before his injury and with glowing school reports being a very sort of avid debater, the ducks of high school and having that real sense of a very bright future for him. In terms of his life after the injury, he had a lot of quality in his life. He inherited your father's green thumb, was very devoted to his garden and really continued his passion about music and developed, as you say, some even more eclectic tastes. So in terms of the quality of his life, even though he lived with the brain injury and he had a range of other health conditions, he had a tremendous quality of life. Maybe not quite what was expected before his brain injury, but one that still gave him that ability to contribute to family and to the community.
It did. He lived with his compensation money. He bought his own house and he drove for a period of time. He lived independently for a long period of time. Terry became very involved in volunteering for the Brain Injury Association in Queensland. So he was very active, very independent. He still needed support, but he was very independent and very determined to be independent.
So I want to ask you about how the public trustee came into his life. So are we right in understanding that following the car accident, there was a claim for compensation? That claim was successful and he received an award of around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And are we right in understanding that around nineteen, so we're talking nineteen ninety, that a limited administration order was made for the public trustee to manage Terry's finances following the accident and following the award of compensation? Is that your understanding of what occurred?
That is my understanding.
And it's your understanding that the family were not consulted or advised in relation to the public trustee receiving such an appointment, is your understanding?
I don't know if that's the case. I don't think we were given the option. We weren't. My understanding is there was no other option available.
So you may have been told about why the trustee would be appointed, but no one, to your recollection, suggested that a family member could take on that role?
Not to my recollection or knowledge, no.
And to your recollection, was there any discussion as to why Terry couldn't continue to make decisions about how his finances might be managed?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you think there, at the time, and I know it's a long time ago, reflecting back on it, it was just an assumption that because Terry had the, a brain injury, that it followed that he couldn't manage his finances?
I think there was a lot of that, not just then, but also throughout the years where he's, yeah, and that goes exactly to it. If he has a brain injury, then he won't have capacity to be able to do that.
Given that...
Ms. Nunn, can I ask this question, please? Who brought the compensation claim on behalf of Terry?
It was an insurance. I think it would have been Terry's insurer, but I'm fuzzy on that, to be honest. So I think it would have been, yeah, it was insurance.
Yes, well, I'm just wondering whether the appointment of the public trustee was a consequence of the order made by the court for compensation. It's not unusual for that to happen in order to manage the lump sum compensation, which was the result of damages claims, at least in those days.
Sure.
Reflecting on Terry's life and your knowledge of the way in which he made decisions for his life, do you have a view as to whether he would have been able to have made decisions about managing his finances?
Terry still had his own bank account, so he still had his own key card. And for many years, when he was living independently, he did manage his finances. Now mum was still very actively involved, so mum would help him menu plan and she would help him do his grocery list so he knew exactly what he needed to buy. She would help him just, you know, budget, I guess. But he still had his own key card and managed his finances. So I think he could have managed to pay his bills if he was supported to do that.
You recall in the early days that when the public trustee was his administrator, that the public trustee was at times really good. You say that in the statement. And are we right in understanding that one of the reasons for that is that Terry had the same person administering his funds for almost twenty years?
I don't know if it was for twenty years. I know that there was the same case officer involved for quite some time. He spoke with Terry. He had been out to Terry's house and visited Terry face-to-face. That case officer rang mum and dad routinely to talk about budgets. So he was very actively involved with Terry.
And it was in the early two thousands, Terry's now in his late forties, that he started to experience some seizures?
Correct.
And as his health and if personal conditions started to require more support, did that mean that there were sort of changes in the way in how Terry lived or where he lived or even decisions that were being made about his finances, do you know?
There was certainly a change in where he lived and how he lived because it, his seizures became quite frequent and he was living on his own. So he would collapse in the bedroom or on one occasion on the driveway of the house, on the driveway of the house when he was taking the bins out. He ended up being there all night because he couldn't get up. Mum and dad organised a, like a medical alert for him, but sometimes he didn't think to press it. So we tried to keep him in his own residence for as long as we could, but it just became unsafe. So he began spending more and more time with mum and dad. Financially, it became, I guess, an issue when we had to start spending money on his care. So he was living with mum and dad for a period of time, but they just weren't able to manage. And to be perfectly honest, it wasn't fair on Terry either, having them do some things for him that, he was a proud man. Yeah.
So did that mean a change in his living arrangements?
It did.
Did he have to sell his property and find new accommodation?
He didn't sell his property initially. So I had been looking around and I found a local provider who had availability for respite, who seemed like it might be a good fit for Terry. So we talked with Terry at the time about trying it out and he did that. And after a period of a few months, we talked to him about maybe making that a more permanent option and he agreed. Yeah. I'm sorry.
So what, so in terms of the public trustee's role and any decisions made around this time, just to be clear, the public trustee didn't have authority to make decisions about where Terry lived, but did have authority to make decisions about how Terry used his finances and money? When it came to changing the living arrangements, those two things came together a little bit, right? So what, what did that mean in terms of control over Terry's decision-making around finances? And how that influenced or impacted on decisions about where he was living?
So it became an issue because twenty-four-by-seven supported accommodation and care is very expensive. Terry had, obviously, his assets, his house, but he also had a sum of money that was invested by the public trustee on his behalf. Initially, very shortly after he went into care, I had a public trustee case officer ring me one day and say, essentially, you're spending too much money on Terry's care. He cannot afford that. You should think about putting him in a aged care facility. And he was fifty-five at the time.
And was it your understanding that that was in the scope of the public trustee's duties and functions?
I don't believe so. I understand their concern about spending money. We were concerned about that too. But my understanding was, and actually, this is what I was told by an executive from the public trustee himself, was that it was not within their scope of responsibilities to advise on where he should live.
So did that cause any tension between the family or Terry and the public trustee?
I believe it did, yes.
Want to now move to a little further forward and to a three-year period that were extremely difficult for the family. That's between twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen. This is a difficult time because in August twenty fifteen, your mum passed away. And almost two years to the day, your dad passed away in August twenty seventeen. And Terry passed away in December twenty eighteen and he was sixty-three years old at the time. So for a family that was extremely close, the unravelling of those family bonds by the death of your parents and your eldest brother really were very significant in terms of the impact on you and the rest of your family, is that right?
That's correct.
This period of time was not a period of time that you also thought that you might be spending quite a bit of time with lawyers and involved in disputes, is that right?
Yes, you can say that, yes.
The issues arose this way, and jump in and tell me if I'm not doing justice to what you've said in the statement. Part of your parents' approach to thinking about the future was also thinking about the importance of making wills in relation to what should happen to their respective estates. It's a case, isn't it, that both of your parents went to the public trustee to have their wills made?
That's correct.
And your parents were aware that one of the services offered by a public trustee is to make wills for people?
Yes.
Were you involved in any of the steps that your parents took to make arrangements with the public trustee to prepare wills for both your mother and your father?
No, I wasn't.
Were you aware that they had made wills with respect to your parents?
I was aware that my parents had made wills because they left just a list of where everything was in case they popped off the perch.
So after your mother passed away in August twenty fifteen, what do you remember about what happened to her estate?
The very first contact that we had was not too long after mum died. I want to say it was a month, but a month or two after mum died. And a public trustee case officer rang dad one day and advised him that they were considering a family provisions challenge against mum's estate. And during that conversation, advised him not to sell any of his wife's jewellery.
Your father was quite distressed about that?
He was absolutely distraught.
For him, that caused him to lose some trust and confidence in the public trustee, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And in terms of his own situation, it caused him to worry what might happen when he passed away?
He was extremely distressed and he actually was even having the conversation with me whilst he was palliative in hospital. And he turned to me at one stage and said, "I hope they leave you alone, doll." So he was still worried about it even as he was dying.
But he had a new...
Sorry, can I ask this, please? Ms. Nunn, who was the executor of your mother's estate? Because when a, when a public trustee makes a will, it's not uncommon for the public trustee to appoint itself as executor.
No, the family were, I believe it was dad and I want to say my brothers as well, but I actually can't recall, but it was the family.
Yeah, well, that, yes, thank you. That, that's what I was interested in because it would hardly be, I imagine, possible for the public trustee as executor to be the subject of a claim by the public trustee as guardian on behalf of your brother. So I assume the claim was made against your father as executor of your mother's estate?
Correct.
Thank you.
So he, your father had a new will prepared by a separate lawyer?
Yes.
Because he didn't want to have the experience for the family that he experienced?
Yes.
When your father passed away in August twenty seventeen, what do you remember about the arrangements in relation to his estate? Like what, what did he do with his will? Did he leave his estate to the surviving family?
Yes, so dad's will was written in exactly the same way that mum's will was written. They were both adamant that the estate be split evenly six ways between all six children.
After your father passed away, the public trustee commenced a proceeding in the Queensland District Court for what you understood to be a challenge to your father's will to make extra provision for your youngest brother, John, is that right?
That's correct.
Your recollection is that the public trustee's claim... Your recollection is that the public trustee's claim uh, was made on John's behalf was for John to receive two hundred thousand dollars from your father's estate instead of the hundred and ten thousand dollars that he was bequeathed in the estate. That's your understanding?
That is correct.
When you became aware of the proceedings, because you and your other brothers were named as parties, is that right?
We were the executives, myself and two other brothers, yes.
Your, your understanding is that if um, John received two hundred thousand from your father's estate, that that may have an impact on his eligibility for public housing, is that right?
That's correct.
And at the time, your understanding was that there was an asset threshold of ninety-five thousand for public housing?
Correct.
So one of the immediate concerns for you was whether the public trustee had turned its mind to what might be the broader implications for your youngest brother, John, to receive uh, from the estate, two hundred thousand dollars? And whether that would jeopardise his housing arrangements immediately and in particular into the future, is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, is it fair to say that your family is not one that spent a lot of time in court or in litigation?
Um, I don't ever recall being in court prior to that.
And you found the process of defending these proceedings in court very stressful?
Yes.
Very confronting?
Yes.
And very difficult at times to understand what on earth was going on, is that right?
Um, yes.
The um, proceedings were ultimately settled, is that right?
That's correct.
So rather than uh, taking the case all of the way through to court where a judge decided what would happen, you all got together and worked out what should happen. Is that right?
Um.
I'm not asking you to disclose anything confidential that might have occurred in a mediation.
We were given some options and we agreed to settle.
So the outcome was that John would receive a hundred and fifty thousand and um, and that ar- arrangement was agreed?
It was.
And after uh, the settlement of the matter, you discovered a few other things then in relation to the public trustee's role as John's administrat- financial administrator. That concerned issues around increased fees and also legal costs associated with the public trustee's application. What do you want to tell the Royal Commission about?
The legal costs we were made aware of throughout the proceedings, I have to say, um. Um, so we did know that there would be legal costs associated with that, and I believe that was part of the settlement. So, and it was spelt out how much John would pay versus how much we would pay for John. So we kind of halved his costs. So that was, we were well aware of that. What, so our entire concern right throughout that period of about eighteen months was how is this going to affect John's home? Because he needs his home. Um, and to change that arrangement and have him maybe move somewhere else in a worst-case scenario or to have his expenses go up considerably because he was now over the threshold was not a good situation for him. What we were never told and what we didn't understand was that once we had settled and John had received his um, uh, I've lost the word.
The sum.
Said, yeah, once he'd received his money, that he then was no longer eligible for the community rebates that were paid um, for him when he was previously um, before he received his inheritance.
Now, out of this scenario, it's really caused you to reflect on whether or not there was a conflict of interest for the public trustee. On one hand, the public trustee has drafted the will reflecting your parents' respective wishes to divide their estates between the family members equally. Then on the other hand, having drafted that will, public trustee is the same entity that then challenges that will. So at the time, you found that a little confusing and over time you've reflected on what you consider to be a fairly significant conflict of interest, is that right?
Yes.
And what's your view about whether the public trustee can discharge that important function of providing support to the community, particularly drafting wills, but equally supporting the individuals for whom they may have financial administration orders to protect that person's interests as well? How's that? How, how do you think that conflict?
I still remain of the view very strongly that I believe it's a, a direct conflict of interest. I do understand the, the community service, like you said, of free wills and that some pe- it's a very valuable function for some people. But I don't believe it should remain under the public trustee. I think it should be done by somebody else. And the fact that I, I, I don't believe my parents understood that that is what would happen when they died. Obviously dad found out and he was very distressed about that. But the fact that the public trustee effectively, in my view, weaponised my parents' life savings to fight their children in court and put their, I felt, our youngest brother in a very risky situation. I just, I, I just don't comprehend.
The, the whole process of resolving this has caused you great distress, but it's also made you fairly angry, hasn't it?
Very.
And uh, what have you done in terms of seeking reform uh, in this area? I know you've made some suggestions to the Royal Commission.
Um.
What, what steps have you taken?
Well, throughout the court proceedings, I escalated my concerns to a number of different bodies. Um, I won't name them here unless you want me to, but
Okay.
Um, um, I escalated initially to the triple C. I went to the Queensland Ombudsman. I went to the Queensland Health Ombudsman, who referred me to APRA, who referred me to the Occupational Therapy Needs Board, that Occupational Therapy Review Board of Australia. I went to Human Rights, Queensland Human Rights. I went to my state Member of Parliament. I went to the Shadow Attorney General, the Attorney General, um, I even escalated to the Premier at one stage. I went to multiple state MPs. So that was throughout the court proceedings. Um, people acknowledged um, what was happening, but um, indicated that they either didn't have jurisdiction or that they were unable to assist because it was an active court proceeding. After the court proceeding, um, I decided to pursue a formal complaint against the public trustee. Um, I sought legal advice and initially submitted um, a I submitted a maladministration complaint because I thought that was the correct thing to do. But that was declined and instead accepted as a public interest disclosure complaint. Um, that went through various um, machinations, uh, wasn't resolved effectively, and then I escalated that to the Queensland Ombudsman.
Have you got any resolution from any of these uh, agencies that you've contacted?
Um, I got resolution in that um, all of the legal fees that we incurred. So initially, whilst the complaint was a public interest disclosure with the public trustee, um, and the discussion was between um, myself and them. They initially reimbursed, acknowledged some um, shortcomings, I guess. Um, and initially refunded John's, what he had paid in legal fees, which was twenty thousand dollars. Further down the track, they reimbursed us another twenty thousand dollars for our legal fees towards John. Um, the Queensland Ombudsman became engaged. That process took a year. Um, but at the end of that, the public trustee agreed to reimburse us our legal, personal legal fees. We were also reimbursed um, the fees for the occupation, the three occupational therapy needs reports that were done for John. And we were reimbursed, um, John was reimbursed, I should say, um, the um, uh, some financial advice fees, so.
And does all of this explain the circumstances which we started with as to why you and your brother then made the application to become the financial administrators?
We were pretty unhappy in the, when, uh, after mum died, um, uh, really, um, we were pretty unhappy um, with the public trustee. Um, we didn't actually realise that we could make a challenge for um, administration. And it was only in some of the communications that we received during the legal proceedings. Um, we were going back and forth about whether the public trustee would allow my brothers and I to see financial statements for John. And they were declining at the time and indicated that if we didn't like it, we could apply for administration. And that was basically our lightbulb moment. We went, what? We can apply. Uh, we didn't realise, as crazy as that sounds, we didn't realise we could do it.
So in your statement, you've identified a number of challenges that you've had with the public trustee in different parts of uh, the trustee's administration of both Jono and also for Terry. And the litigation is really the one that's been the straw that's broken the camel's back, if I can use that expression. Is that right?
That's correct.
But some, when you reflect back of thirty years of the public trustee being in your life, there's some other aspects of the relationship with the public trustee that you felt could have been better in terms of supporting the family, but also supporting your respective brothers, is that right?
Yes.
And one is uh, what you consider to be a lack of communication and information.
Yes.
And the example that you've just given about not knowing what the options might be for an alternative to the public trustee is one of them. Is the issue in terms of communication, the importance of communication based on mutual trust and confidence between the family, most importantly, the represented person and the trustee?
It's trust and confidence, absolutely, and integrity, but it's also, this is a real person. This is my little brother. And to put him at risk and to do something that is not in his best interests is just unconscionable to me. I don't understand.
And you still don't understand? Is part of the um, communication is, if you reflect back on the district court proceedings, if you had been able to sit down and have a discussion earlier, before the process even started, that that may have given you an opportunity to have a better understanding of what the public trustee's responsibilities and functions are, but also an opportunity to be involved in what decisions needed to be made?
Yes, um, and I'll give you an example. So, um, unknown to us, after our mother died, um, there was an occupational therapy needs assessment report um, commissioned by the public trustee about um, for both John and Terry, um, actually. Um, and we were not, um, that was commissioned in early twenty sixteen. Um, we were never made aware of the existence of that report. It only became knowledge to us once we were served the papers from the district court proceeding. So from twenty sixteen, early twenty sixteen, dad died in um, August twenty seventeen. He was alive. The public trustee could have gone to dad and said, Mr. Nun, we have concerns about your sons, both John and Terry, because they investigated Terry, a claim for Terry as well. Um, we have concerns about their long-term financial, um, uh, how they're going to manage. And the reason why we have these concerns is based on this report that we've had commissioned. We think they're going to, it's going to cost more money than they're going to have. Can we sit down and talk about that? And dad could have made an informed decision. He could have had a conversation. We could have all had a conversation as a family in that time, and he could have decided for himself if he wanted to change his will then or not. Even after the court proc- well, even after dad decide, died, there's a period of nine months between when somebody dies and a, an estate can be challenged or will can be challenged. Nobody talked to us in that nine-month period, nobody. Um, we would have been willing to talk. We didn't understand what was going on. We had been asked for a lot of information. We hadn't been given any information. And then on the last business day of that nine-month period, um, our solicitor received some advice to say that the public trustee was filing in the district court.
So communication's one thing, the other is support. And you've told the Royal Commission that you had no idea where to turn for help. And um, even when you made contact with these various organisations to raise complaints and to understand what was going on, you felt that there were a lot of dead ends. Where have you had support, if any?
Um, I did get support from my local Member of Parliament and she tried as much as she could to help us. But um, there's, there's a plethora of information out there that is completely overwhelming to me. Um, I was reading sections of the Act and legislation and my eyes were rolling around. I didn't have a clue what I was reading. I went to, um, um, the only place I found support was when I found Asgar, which is an advocacy group.
Um, so Asgar's the Australian Association to Stop Guardianship and Administration Abuse.
Correct.
Um, how did, how did Asgar assist you?
Um, just in providing advice about what to expect, um, provided a lot of assistance and support around um, making the application for QCAT, um, um, and just moral support and advice and similar lived experience.
How did it feel to sort of find people who had had a similar experience to you and your family?
Um. Safe.
Sa- safe because there are people who understood what you had experienced. There are people who didn't bring judgement to the way in which um, you had made decisions and decided to stand up for your family member?
They understood, um, actually understood what we were going through and had the same experiences. And it was like, we're not crazy. This is real. This is, this is happening. Um.
One of the, the things that you sort of discovered in this process is that it is difficult to find some of these networks because talking about, or talking publicly about what happens in proceedings of this kind is not permitted, is that right?
Correct.
Are you taking an approach where you're at that point where you're going to say what you need to say, is that right?
Oh, yes.
And you've recorded in your witness statement at paragraph fifty-three about an um, an interview that you did with the ABC that was published on the ABC Online in October last year, is that right?
Yes.
And you're very happy that you're able to speak publicly in that way?
Yes.
But you found out this morning that the ABC has taken that article offline.
Yes.
And that, that itself has caused you enormous distress in being able to tell your story today at the Royal
Yes, yes.
All right, I want to just fi- uh, before the Commissions might, I ask you some questions to just go through the six points that you've identified at the end of your statement, which are your suggestions for change. So you, you are, based on your experience, very much committed to seeing some reform in guardianship and administration systems. And the number one point that you identify and you've told us in preparing for the hearing is accountability. And you say, in the absence of accountability, there's no incentive to change.
Correct.
What does accountability mean for you and what would it look like in any reform?
Um, accountability means that our leaders must show us by their actions that they take the abuse and exploitation of disabled people seriously and that there will be consequences for unethical behaviour, in my opinion, and misconduct, in my opinion. I worked for a very regulated corporate um, business for many, many years. And if I had behaved towards my clients, the way that we And if I had behaved towards my clients the way that we were treated, I would have been walked out the door. And when I asked a senior executive from the public trustee what the consequences would be for employees in their organisation, he said that they would be counseled as to the expectations of their role. And that doesn't seem to be enough to me.
He didn't feel that was that sufficient accountability?
No. There needs to be consequences for this because there will be no incentive otherwise.
The second point you raise is the system needs to be understood by those who use it.
Yes.
And so, as you've said, there's a plethora of information. But there needs to be some pathway by which families and ordinary people can understand what their rights are, where they can go for support and to find information in an accessible form. And do you think that the information explaining the process should be more person-centered in nature? Is that right?
It should.
You also acknowledge that the offices of the public trustee are under considerable pressure and workload. And you raise the concern as to whether they can discharge their function with respect to having more personalised contact and dialogue with their clients. And in that respect, you're reflecting back on those times that worked well for Terry?
Yes.
But also those times that were difficult.
Correct.
A third is transparency, and partly touched on that. But you, you would like to see some modification of the non-publication provisions. You think that that would be a positive first step on accountability and transparency. But you also recognise the reasons why these secrecy or confidentiality provisions may have been introduced at the start, but you think there might be an opportunity for review and revision. Is that right?
I, yes, that's correct.
And also part of transparency is avoiding conflicts of interest. And we've touched on that in relation to giving people information if the public trustee is preparing or involved in somebody's will. So that's issue of avoiding conflicts of interest is also an important point you wanted to raise. The next is having clear and transparent complaint processes. You think they're necessary? And I'll read your words. My experience of the complaint systems was and is a farce. So you don't hold back on describing the complaint system. Can I ask you, in, in an ideal world, what would a complaint system look like for you and what would have worked for you at the time?
What would have worked for me at the time would have been consistency in communication. So we had an investigator assigned to us and she was, she seemed very nice. She was very empathetic. She spent a lot of time with myself and my brother on the phone. I followed up with some information and then we proceeded into a bit of a black hole. So I would send follow-up communications. Nothing would be forthcoming in return. The public trustee at the time, and I believe these guidelines have been modified, were obliged to resolve a public interest disclosure or, or that kind of complaint within twenty-eight business days. That timeline came and went and nothing happened. We escalated repeatedly. We, those escalations were not responded to or replied to, even acknowledged. Our solicitor escalated, not responded to. So I think there has to be that demonstrated commitment that this is really serious and really important to us and that engagement. When I'm reaching out, asking what's happening, tell me, like engage with me, assign the resources that are needed to appropriately manage expectations throughout the process.
So that's a better complaint system. And your final point is this, and I'll just read your final paragraph. A truly human rights-based approach to supported decision-making. While a person's financial position must be prioritised and protected, it is never more important than their human rights, their ability to choose what they want and what makes them happy. It's a balance.
Yes.
Ms Nun, thank you very much for your evidence. The Commissioners may have some questions for you.
Thank you.
Ms Nun, before I ask my colleagues if they have any questions, I've, I've got a couple. And I apologise in advance if I haven't understood what I should have understood from the evidence. You referred to you having had refunded some costs by the public trustee. You seem to have been involved in two separate proceedings. One was the claim brought by the public trustee in the name of your brother for provision out of the estate of your mother and then your father. The second was your application to be appointed as the guardian for your brother. Now, my understanding is that was resisted by the public trustees. Have I understood that correctly?
No, no. So we applied for administration, not for guardianship.
Sorry, for, for administration, yes. Was that, was that resisted?
No, it was not resisted. So the other, the other thing that I've been involved in was quite a protracted public interest disclosure process.
Right. And the monies or the costs that you ultimately recovered from the public trustee, that was in respect of costs incurred for which of these various proceedings?
That was in respect of costs incurred for the legal proceedings on John's behalf for extra provisions out of Dad's estate.
So that was, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. So they were the legal costs incurred by John. So the costs charged by the official solicitors for his legal representation during district court proceedings. And then the personal costs incurred by us for our own solicitor.
I see. Thank you. That, that clarifies it. I'm sorry. I didn't understand that fully from the material. You've said, and I understand, I think what you're saying, that you considered that the public trustee was in a conflict of interest situation. Can you just tell me, because I've got a tentative view of the conflict of interest from a lawyer's perspective. I'm just interested in your own words as to what you think the, the conflict of interest was that so concerned you?
The, the thing that bothers me, one of the things that bothers me the most about this situation is that the public trustee is an entirely self-funded organisation. So they make their money from fees and from legal costs. Well, the, the official solicitors makes the money from the legal costs. So it seems to me to be a conflict of interest where you are managing the financial situation for a client. And it, and it's entirely self-funded. And then you're bringing legal action on behalf of that client and using not their money, but the money from the estate.
Right. So you, you, you saw the conflict of interest as the potential financial advantage to the public trustee in commencing proceedings to obtain monies on behalf of John out of the estate that the public trustee would gain financially from that.
Correct.
All right. Well, I'm going to say something technical and it's a tentative view. The conflict of interest or a conflict of interest that appears to a lawyer, or at least to this lawyer, is potentially to be pretty obvious, is that if a, someone, in this case, the public trustee prepares a will. In order to do that, you must take instructions from the person who is making the will, the testator. When a claim is made under what used to be called family provision, is now often, I don't know the name in Queensland, Succession Act Claims Against An Estate. The issue is, or at least one of the issues is, what would a wise testator do in making provision for the person on whose behalf the claim is brought? So the public trustee, apparently, and subject to any contrary information, was in the position of having drafted a will on instructions and then having, making a claim on the basis of the, seeking to set aside the terms of the will. And in the course of that, it would be necessary to determine what the attitude of the testator was and the reasons for the testator in making the will in the first place. So that's, that's what I see as potentially, without, without making a final judgement about it, is a fairly, what seems to be a fairly obvious conflict of interest in the proceedings themselves. But I was interested in what your perception of the conflict was, and I understand that. I thank you for it. They're the only questions that I had, and I'll ask now if Commissioner McEwan has any questions for you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your evidence. I have one question in relation to paragraph four of your statement, where you talk about John's NDIS plan. And you say that it includes supported independent living, community access and support. Did that include support for the, supported decision-making?
No, I don't believe so. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan, do you have any questions?
There's a couple of little details I don't quite understand. It relates to, first of all, John's accommodation arrangements. I take it John was living in what might be called a group home, wasn't it?
Correct.
Now, the group home would have been owned by some disability organisation for which John would have paid rent. Is that right?
The group, it's a public housing home.
Yep.
And the lease is actually held by his housemate. And he is a approved tenant. So he pays rent to the Department of Housing.
And the rent is somehow rather calculated on the basis of any income he receives, I take it?
There is, I don't understand the ins and outs, but there is a threshold. And at the time, it was ninety-five thousand dollars, above which if the person has more than that in assets or funds, then they can be charged additional rent all the way up to being disqualified from, you know, having access to that house.
I think it might be a market rent. They can even charge a market rent, I think, because it's not considered to be.
Yeah.
You referred to community rebates. What was, what did you mean by that? Was that the thing called the Commonwealth Rent Assistance, which is something given to people as part of their disability support pension?
No. So when you look at the public trustee's financial statements, he would be charged administration fees, asset management fees, other miscellaneous fees every month, equating to about six hundred dollars. Then you would see a reversal and a credit of about five hundred dollars. And it's, I think it's called the Commonwealth Government Rebate Scheme or something like that. So for people who do not have a huge amount of money, John O only had probably about thirty thousand dollars in the bank at the time, that, that is rebated to them to subsidise their costs of administration. So when he received his inheritance, that rebate went away. So he went from paying net a hundred, hundred and fifty dollars a month to all of a sudden paying around six hundred dollars a month, which was a huge hit on his disability pension.
The other thing, I was just, I, I approach this not with the wisdom and knowledge of my esteemed colleague, the Chair, but I imagine that.
You could, you can stop right there, Commissioner Ryan.
But look, I imagine if you go and make a will with the public trustee, one of the other things that happens is that the public trustee knows a lot more about your business than you otherwise would. They're able to use the will as a means that they would have found out when the time of death had occurred, they had access to what the assets were, in a, in a way in which they would not have done if they, if they had simply, if your father, for example, had made a will with another solicitor. Is that the case?
That's the way I see it. Yes.
That's all, Mr T.
Thank you very much. Ms Nun, thank you very much for your evidence today, for the statement you've provided and for the insight you've given us about your own experiences and those of your family. We thank you very much indeed for your willingness to share that with the Commission. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And I just deal with the tender of Ms Nun's statement and the article that she refers to from the ABC. Could they be marked exhibit thirty point zero four two and thirty point zero four three?
Those two documents will be admitted into evidence with the exhibit markings indicated by the S E S.
We could then adjourn for fifteen minutes for morning tea. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's now just before eleven fifty-five Sydney time. We'll adjourn until eleven, at twelve ten. Thank you.
Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you, Chair. The next witness is Julie Burry. Part of the OSA team, so the Office of Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission and our counselling team travelled with me to Kangaroo Island a few weeks ago to take Julie's evidence. Julie Burry really wanted to be here at the Royal Commission in person. Her advocate is here and her legal representative is here. But we all agreed that it was probably best because of Julie's current health to pre-record her story, which we did on Kangaroo Island. So I'd like to share her evidence with you now and we'll play the recording of the, the evidence that we took from Ms Burry a few weeks ago. Thank you, Chair.
Ms Eastman, is it necessary to take an appearance from Ms Burry's representative?
I, I don't think so. She's not presently in the, oh, she is. Do you want to make an appearance? Certainly. Leong, L E O N G initials, DL, solicitor with your story, disability legal support. I, I do appear for Ms, Ms Burry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms Leong also appeared for Ms Nun when she gave her evidence earlier today. Right.
Yes, thank you.
Turn to the video.
So Julie, thank you for joining the Royal Commission.
That's okay.
And you've done your affirmation.
I have.
And I want to start by asking you about where you live. We've joined you here in Kangaroo Island. Tell us about where you live and what your life is like now.
Okay, I live on Bowden Beach. This is called Bowden Beach. And I'm in a rental house at the moment. I have, I lived here in my own house in about fourteen months ago. I've just recently returned. And it's, Kangaroo Island is a wonderful place. I've always loved it. But my family have always been in Queensland.
What do you love about living here on Kangaroo Island?
I love that it's so remote and I love the peace more than anything. And this is a beautiful place with a very unique light and feel about it.
And how does that make you feel to live here on Kangaroo Island?
Well, I feel it's easier to cope with a lot of my challenges. It's not easy to cope with my challenges usually, but here at least I can look out the window and see the light. And even in a gale force winds, you know, there's something positive or negative happening, but I can feel it. And I'm part of it.
So you know, this part of the Royal Commission's work is a hearing looking at the issues around guardianship and supported decision-making. And I want to ask you some questions in a moment about some of the issues you've confronted in those systems. But before we do that, can I ask you about living with disability and what your disability is?
I was diagnosed with Parkinson's in nineteen, well, when I was forty-five. So I'm sixty-one this year. So it's been a long time dealing, coming to terms with Parkinson's.
What is like, what is it like to live with Parkinson's?
Well, for me, which is can be very different from everybody else. It's like being, like, putting, given a label, which you're constantly fighting.
What sort of label?
The label says you'll be cognitively declining anytime soon. Or maybe now, and you look like, so I'm constantly feeling the need to justify that I'm not.
So let's go back to the beginning. When you were first diagnosed with Parkinson's, you're a young woman.
Yes.
And those first few years, you were taking the medication and did you think, well, everything seems to be fine?
Well, initially, they don't give you any medication because the only reason they give you the medication is to prove or not prove that you do have Parkinson's disease. There is no definitive test for Parkinson's disease at the moment. There's observation. There's observations, cogwheel rigidity in your joints, the way you walk. Tremor is only a very small part of it, really, and things like loss of smell, I never lost my sense of smell. What I do think is more is that it's a neurodegenerative disease. And for me, that's more important than any label. I share a degenerative disease with people with MS, with M and D, with a lot of people. And the real thing about it is why our, my particular, there's certain neurons in my brain, I'm sure that are degenerating. Nothing to do with the cognitive area. Everybody has a different area of the brain that's degenerating. But we all get lumped together with different labels, and I don't think that is accurate.
When you were first diagnosed, did you give any thought to what might happen in the future? And in particular, starting to think about how you'd make decisions about your life into the future?
Well, when I was diagnosed, it was a week after I came, returned to Australia from from Singapore. I was in an expat marriage for twenty five years. So I hadn't really given a lot of thought to what I would do with Parkinson's disease. I'd only just, so seven days. In that seven days, I left my husband and a home, and I brought my three children back to Australia, and then I was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease.
So you're sort of basically living in the moment, I would imagine, at that time, is that right?
It was pretty difficult, but I had an aunt with Parkinson's disease. So I had a fairly decent idea of what it was going to be like. But, you know, when you're forty five or any age really, I, I had always had a strong body, I'd never had a broken bone. I sort of, in my head, I thought, I will conquer this. I'd always conquered everything else. And, and I'd left, you know, that I'd been able to leave my husband when things were going very, very badly. And come back to Australia and survive, I thought, well, I can, I'll be okay.
And you've worked in your life, haven't you? You've had different jobs. Tell me about what you've done in your life.
Well, I, I grew up in central Queensland, so I, I did very well at school. But I, I wasn't able to pursue, I wanted to do other things, but I became what usually women do, nursing or doctoring, nursing or teaching, so eventually I became a teacher.
What sort of teaching were you doing?
Special needs.
And how did you find that work?
At the time, it was okay. It suited me as a wife. And that part of my life, it helped me be the mother that I wanted to be. I don't think I'd choose it again.
Well, there have been a lot of changes in your life since you were forty five and first diagnosed. Can I ask you some questions about some of the changes that have occurred to you?
Sure.
Before we do that, one of the topics the Royal Commission's listening to for this hearing is understanding the importance of being independent and being able to make decisions as a person with disabilities. If reflecting on your life and the decisions that you've had to make in your life, it's a case, isn't it, that you've had to make some very difficult and complex decisions during the course of your life?
Always, yes.
And has that those stages of your life where you've had to make those decisions, how have you gone about doing that?
Well, I think quite often I was controlled when I was married.
What do you mean by control?
Well, I wasn't allowed to get my viewpoint across. Perhaps, and in the end I just succumbed and I just allowed a person to take over that because it was too difficult and too painful to pursue my own, our viewpoint.
But then you've had to make some difficult decisions, so how did you approach that?
Well, in the end, I suppose, the diagnosis of Parkinson's pushed me.
Why is that?
Because I thought, if my life is limited, is this how I want to live the rest of my life, a limited life? And then a year later, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. And that was the full stop, I guess, it just went. And from then on, I just knew my life is limited and that how would I want, and this, and that life is pretty precious. And I didn't say it gratuitously, I just really, really meant it. There are so many things I wanted to do in life that I hadn't done, and I wouldn't be controlled by another person anymore. And I took great, you know, I was always joyful in life after that. If I wanted to dance, I danced, and if I wanted to sing, I'd sing, even if it was out of tune, and the kids didn't like that too much, but and I just enjoyed myself.
What about being financially independent? Was that something that you had to address when you left your marriage?
Yes, yeah.
In that part of your life, how did you go about addressing becoming financially independent?
Well, I enjoyed it really. I enjoy research. And as, as much as people really dislike the topic of superannuation and, and making yourself financially independent, I revelled in being able to take control of that. And I was always confident that I, I would have enough money behind me to live a really good life and do the things I wanted to do. I'd already travelled most of the world, so there wasn't really many places I needed to go as recreation wise. But I wanted to go to the World Parkinson's Congress in the States one year, and I set goals. I had insurance in place in my superannuation. So financially, I felt at any, every stage, I was okay. I covered myself.
Can I talk about a time that was quite difficult for you? And this is where that independence started to really come against other people starting to make decisions or deciding what should be best for you. Can I ask you about that time in your life? So there was a time, I think around twenty seventeen.
Yes.
Where you were unwell for periods of time, and you ended up in a hospital.
Yes.
Can you remember anything about that that you want to share? And if, if you don't feel comfortable about talking about anything, just let me know as we go along. Okay.
Hindsight is a great thing.
So what can you remember about having to have that time in hospital? And it was one week, wasn't it? And it was a really challenging week for you.
Yeah, and it was a daisy week, a daisy week, because I was having morphine third hourly. And when you're on drugs, you're not in, you know, I know, I'm not that person. When you're having morphine, when I was having morphine third hourly, even subcutaneously, you, you feel like you're in another world. It's a, it's a slow-moving world, and it's a drug, drug world. And I was in a lot of pain as well. But now I realise it was, I was in delirium from, from UTIs. I was on a drug that they put people on for Parkinson's disease. I was on a lot of drugs. And one of those ones in particular caused UTIs, and I'd been having multiple UTIs in hindsight.
And that had really affected you in terms of how you feel, but also maybe how you were thinking at the time, is that right?
Not thinking. I felt, I remember the time. I do remember that it was difficult to keep my temper, hold my temper, not bend. But I also know that I felt like I was a dog, being a dog backed into a corner, and no one was listening to me. And I remember the frustration, but also I had come from being down in Kangaroo Island and working as a deckhand. And I, I thought back to that time, I had just spent six months working with men primarily in a, in a different kind of language, it's almost like a second language, because they swear all the time. And I realised that my language had changed too.
Can I still pause there, just so people following us can know where we were going? So you were living in Queensland?
Yes.
And then you moved to
Well, no, I, I was.
So with Singapore to Queensland, is that right?
So I was in Singapore to Queensland. Then when the kids left school, finished school, I went on holiday. And I went, and we bought up, and my husband at the time, we bought in Bundaberg, near Bundaberg.
In Queensland?
Yes, well, I bought a house and it was entirely my money. And that was in Woodgate, which is very close to Bundaberg. So that was about the time you're mentioning, two thousand and seventeen. And I, it was probably my favourite house, but I bought it because it was midway between my father and Rockhampton, and the kids were in Brisbane, so it was sort of, and it justified it. But then there was a Parkinson's Congress happening in Adelaide. And my husband at the time and I had bought a rig, we were going to travel around in. So in two thousand and fifteen, we had started on this journey, and we come to Kangaroo Island. Now, during that time, he decided to leave me in two thousand and fifteen, my second husband.
Sorry to hear that.
Well, in hindsight, it was probably a good thing. I'm, because I was still, I was really in, on the journey of making my own decisions and becoming my own woman. He really, he came along for part of the ride, but very, not very, it was only a couple of years of marriage.
So did that bring you to Kangaroo Island?
Well, I was already here, I'd already bought land here. In two thousand and fifty, June, July two thousand and fifteen, I bought my first block of land, which went on the property settlement with my second husband. And then I bought a second block of land in Western River, and it was still, it was down here. And I had a shed on it and a rainwater tank, and I was preparing to live there. But I also had the house up in Queensland, in Woodgate, that I had no loans, no mortgages, and I owned all my cars outright, so.
Okay, so then we got, got back to that time in hospital, so at that stage you were in Queensland?
Yes, but it was, it was sort of, I had planned to spend the summers, the Queensland summers down here, and the winters in Woodgate. It seemed like a good mix. And I would drive between the two places.
Okay, that's a fair drive.
Three thousand kilometers, yeah. But I did it over about a week at a time, and along the way I stayed in the same places. So I, so at that stage I was up in Bundaberg, and that's why I ended up in near.
So come back to the hospital, so that difficult week, by the end of that week, something happened, didn't it?
Yes.
And so what do you remember about that? What would you like to talk about?
Well, it wasn't just a week in the hospital, it was more than that, I think. Once they put me on morphine, it was difficult to remember the whole, what happened, but I do remember they'd be saying, I said, when are my family going to visit? Because I didn't have any clothes. I had really nice pyjamas about fifty kilometres away, and I just needed someone to bring them in. I didn't have shampoo, conditioner, I didn't have toothpaste. I just felt like I was a wreck. I didn't have any clothes, no shoes, and I didn't even have small change for the vending machine.
So you're hoping the family members would come and bring some of your gear, is that right?
And also just come and visit me. I was very, very sad because nobody, nobody was visiting me. And so this day, my, they said my, my family were going to visit, I think it was a Tuesday. I remember being with the psychologist and she was doing a test, but she didn't say what it was.
You didn't know what the test was about?
You know, it was just a, she said, we were just going to ask you some questions. And just some positive things, your family are going to come and visit. And so I was really happy about that. And so, so during that week though, I was on this morphine and I was getting more and more of it. And I, I know that I was getting other medication, but it was becoming harder and harder to remember what I was getting. But I know that I was in a lot of pain, and I think it was, there was some, there was never mentioned that I had a UTI. It was just mentioned that I was in end-stage Parkinson's. So when the neurologist would come around, he would say to the young, it was a teaching hospital, he'd tell the young people with him that there's a woman and she's in end-stage Parkinson's.
You didn't feel that you were at end-stage?
No, I thought.
Right, and so what, what happened when you thought that the family were coming to see you?
Well, I was very happy.
And do you remember what happened when that?
Yes, I do.
When they arrived? Okay, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, sure. Well, my sister was, my older sister lives in and was living there then. And so she, and my younger sister lived in. So they arrived and they said hello, and I was really happy. And, and then they disappeared, they said, well, see you down in the meeting room. So I said, all right then. And then, so I, I said, did you bring some clothes? And they, they said, no, my sister bought me some opium perfume. And I remember thinking how unusual, given I didn't have anything else. And then I was given my meds, my, my, you know, subcut morphine. Went down to the meeting room, and I made my way down there by myself in my purple surgical gown with my, you know, the backside hanging out. And there's no underclothes, so I was wearing theatre underpants. And it was really hot, and I didn't feel very well at all. And I made my way down this hallway and then we're in the room and they, I sat down. And they said, first of all, we have to tell you that got cancer and he's, it's a very aggressive cancer. And I said, when did he get diagnosed? And they said, when you got admitted to hospital, we didn't want to tell you. And I was, I didn't feel sad, then I started getting angry. And then the next thing that happened was a whole lot of people started arriving.
You didn't know who they were, did you?
There was a doctor that had come to see me, there was a neurologist, there was a physio that I'd seen, but the rest of them, there were like sixteen of them. And it seemed to me, in my, my, my mind, that they were all on that side of the room and I was on this side of the room.
And you felt sort of fairly isolated and ambushed, did you?
But worst of all was this, the girl that was leading it was a, a, the young social worker. And I'd met her during the week. I said to the psychologist, if, could you be here, my family are here? And she said, yes, but except I'm away a certain day, and if that's the case, you're going to have to have somebody else. So she said, talk to the social worker, and I did. And when I, at the end of the meeting with the social worker before this meeting, I'd said to her, you know, Julie, you're very nice, but we're not on the same page, and I don't, I wouldn't want you leading the meeting. Anyway, so there she was, she was leading the meeting.
So the end result of this meeting was that everybody started to say what was best for you, is that right?
Yes, and everybody, well, then my, my son stood up. And he said, what we want is for you to go to a nursing home, Mum.
You didn't want to do that, did you?
No, and I, I yelled and I said, and then I just stood up and said, well, I don't know, I just said, I don't want to be here anymore. I said, it's up, it's me against the world. And I took off and I just went back to my bed.
After that, you now know that the social worker made an application to a tribunal to get some orders around how you could spend your money, is that right?
No.
Remember that?
No, about how I could spend my money.
Because you ended up having a decision made.
Yes.
That you had the trustee who would then control how you could spend your money, but you didn't know that at the time.
Came to talk to me.
And you found out later that this application had been made and a decision was made. And how did you find out that the decision had been made?
Well, there's a lot in between, but I was in Kangaroo Island once again.
So you, after you left hospital, you came back to Kangaroo Island?
But I, do you want to hear that now?
Yeah, we can do that now, for sure.
Three months in between, there was a day where I felt that they were going to move me, the hospital were going to move me, that there was whispering, and nobody would give me a straight answer. It was the same as when the guy in the corner was moved to a mental health unit. And I felt that I was probably going to be moved to a mental health unit, but that day I started bleeding. I'd had a suspected uterine something or other. And I told them that I had, had, had the bleeding at different times. And this day, I started bleeding a lot, and they gave me a sanitary pad and I was very, very heavy. And all of a sudden, they, a nurse came to me and she said, they created a role called a nurse navigator. And I'm going to be a nurse navigator, I'm going to take you back to Woodgate, and I'll make sure it's all set up so that you can survive from home. So off I went with her. I was discharged very suddenly and sent back with her. But, so I got there and she set me all up, she put a SIM card in my phone, made sure everything was okay and put me to bed, and she made an appointment to come back in a couple of days. Well, I went down, I had some lunch and I thought, I don't want to be here, I'll be in Kangaroo Island. So I, I'd always kept some money behind, in, some cash in the house, behind a wall. And I got it out, I went into, caught a taxi into Bundaberg. I had a sense that all was not well. And I got a plane down to Kangaroo Island. He was the skipper of the boat that I was working on, picked me up at the airport, and he took me, he said, you can stay with me if you like. And I started working as a decky on his boat again.
Were you feeling better by this stage?
Yeah, because I didn't have a urinary tract infection, it'd been, had, had handy biotics. When I came back, he said, you look terrible, you look like a ghost. And I said, well, I don't know what's happened, but my family aren't talking to me, I can't seem to get them on the phone. And, but anyway, I resumed life as normal until one Friday afternoon, I went to the bank. And during this time, I sold the land up Middle River, uh, Western River, and the money had gone into the bank. So there's over a hundred and ten thousand dollars at least up there in. And the money had gone into the bank, so there's over a hundred and ten thousand dollars at least up there, in there. Well, should have been to pay the telefor bill, there was nothing in there, the public trustee.
Did you know, and that was the first you heard of the public trustee?
Public trustee, I thought, did walls, didn't know what else they did. And then I said, well, how could they do that? And she said, because you've been found unable to manage your affairs.
The bank teller told you that?
Yes. And I said, but how, I don't understand what affairs. You know, I had no idea. It's hard to imagine, eh?
What did you, what did you do?
Oh, I must have gone very white-faced. She gave me a glass of water, I went outside and. And was picking me up and I said, I couldn't pay the bill, I couldn't pay the telefor because, and he told him and he said, nah, that's just not right. There must be a mistake, ring. So I rang the public trustee, because they'd given me the number for the public trustee in Bundaberg. And I rang them and they said, they told me what had happened. I said, who did that? And they said, we don't know, we can't tell you the details, that's just how it is. I said, it's Friday, what am I supposed to do? I don't have any money. And they said, you took money on the back, out of the bank on two hundred dollars on Tuesday. This Friday then. I said, yes, I know, but I have a substantial amount of money that I can access. They said, well, you just have to be a bit more careful. And we'll get back to you later.
Now, you were not happy with that situation. What did you do to find out more? Or ultimately to have that decision set aside?
Well, I didn't really, I didn't, you imagine, but I just don't know what to say.
So Julie, we're, we're up to that stage about what steps you took to address the situation you found yourself in with the public trustee managing your money. Can you remember what, what you did and ultimately how you got to the tribunal?
Well, I remember that weekend was just absolutely feeling that I had no money. My family weren't answering any phone calls, I was totally by myself. I felt so very alone and very scared. But one thing that I had learned was that I wasn't gonna die. And I felt that nobody understood that, you know, when you think you're gonna die, that is a, it's not a gift. But it is precious because then you realise, everybody else lives their life as if they're gonna live forever. But I knew how, how, you know, that's not true. And it's wrong that people would take my money from me because it seemed that I was being reckless, that was the reason that they, they'd said. But that recklessness wasn't, that wasn't recklessness. I had already justified I, that I looked after my finances. I didn't have to prove anything to myself, but I did go, so what I did, I made a plan with. He was, he's a fisherman, so, you know, he'd never experienced anything like what had happened to me. And he didn't believe that the government would do that without some, so he said, right, well, we have to get this sorted as well, so. I didn't want him taking control. I needed to do it myself. I had a good friend, she was also a social worker. But we had agreed at the end of the counselling that, that client professional relationship was more gonna be a friendship, and I wasn't gonna be her client anymore as a coun, you know, council person. But I did go over and I asked her and she said, right, well, I'll ring, she decided to ring everybody she could. She said, this doesn't, this is not right because if I had ever done this in the past and followed this guardianship procedure. The first thing they do is, is allocate legal guidance to that person. And they know, they know the whole process, she said, and even no matter what state they're in, that I explain to them what's happening. She said, I rang the hospital, she said, I can't get anybody at the moment. Eventually, she did ring the social worker. And the social worker said, well, it's okay, it's just the initial stuff, it's the initial part, it's not totally finished. And she seemed to think that was okay, that I didn't have any money and it was still under the public trustee. And I remember said, um, she said, I'm, this, this girl makes me embarrassed for my profession.
So what did end up doing?
Well, she organised as much as she could. She had to organise a psychiatrist to, to, um, you know, make sure I was okay. I had to go to the doctor and get a sanity certificate and go through all the testing. I had to, I, I, we, we went through all the checklists and she helped me work through this together.
Did you, did you understand at that time, this was about working out whether you had capacity? To be able to make decisions for yourself and this was the process of collecting a lot of information to support proving, you felt you had to prove capacity, is that right?
I didn't know the word capacity.
So that hadn't come up at all?
Well, capacity, I only found out dysfunctional capacity stuff in the last, I don't know, since I've been working with you guys. I didn't realise it was an actual test.
Okay.
It's a crazy test.
So you ended up, you end up being involved in a tribunal hearing, but you're on the phone here from Kangaroo Island?
That was the final thing, yeah. But there had already been a tribunal hearing that I wasn't invited to, yeah.
But this one, you were able to participate by phone?
Requested it, yeah.
That, how was that experience for you?
Well, very difficult, it was extremely stressful and it's stressful for. Stressful, I had to get the GP connect, so he would come on the phone and he was late. But I, it was, it was good, but except, I remember the judge asked me what my property in Woodgate was worth and I said a hundred and something, and it was like four hundred and something. And he asked me three times and on the third time I said, oh, sorry. And I remember thinking, this would be easier if I could see his face. I, it was a slip of the tongue and I was thinking three steps ahead of me instead of concentrating on the moment.
Did anyone explain to you what was going to happen at that tribunal?
Tried to.
And did you, did you go into that knowing what to expect and what was required of you?
I knew that at the end of it, they, he'd make a decision whether I could get my money back or not, that's all I felt. That I could get my assets back. I'd do whatever had to be done to get it back. I'd jump whatever hoops.
Did anyone tell you, well, what was the test that the judge or the tribunal member was going to use to work that out?
I didn't think there was a test.
You did, so you just sort of thought what, you'd just tell him what's happening and?
Yeah, he would say yes or no.
And what was the outcome?
He said, no, in the end, he said, yes, you're, yeah, I find you fiscally responsible and you can, it'll be signed back to you.
And what, what ended up happening then in terms of the public trustee? Did they have anything more to do with you after that decision?
No, I, I, I had to ring them and say, when am I going to get my, you know, my steak back? And they said, it'll take a month or so. And then when I went back to Bundaberg, because before the tribunal, I'd been in the process of looking at selling my house. Before they put a caveat on it. So I went back to a house that had a green swimming pool. It was needing about fifty thousand dollars in repairs.
Who was looking after the house while you were here?
Yeah, public trustee and I, but I never got any, and I knew that they were doing things because I had got a pool guy to give me a pool compliance certificate before all of this happened. Because I was thinking of selling the house and I needed a pool compliance certificate. And during, when the house was under public trustee, I got a phone call from this pool guy and he said, Julie, six weeks ago I did this, why am I doing another one for the public trustee? And I said, I don't know, they have to do whatever they tell you to do. And it's embarrassing, but.
In terms of sort of getting all your estate back or all your finances back, did everything come back to you? Or were some of the, some of your finances used to pay for legal costs or other things? No one told you about that?
I know that I got a lot less back. It was very painful. I think I got, I don't know, but I'm pretty sure that I got about three hundred thousand dollars less than I should have done.
But did you, you don't remember getting any statements or anything explaining that? At any time during this process, you'd think, I need a lawyer?
No, because I couldn't afford it.
Did you think about whether you needed an advocate and somebody to walk with you?
They were.
So you now know what an advocate is?
I should have had.
And so knowing what you know now and back at that time in twenty seventeen, would it have assisted you to have an advocate to walk with you?
Yes.
And what would have been the benefits of having an advocate when you went through that process?
Well, then they could have explained what it was all about. I'd know what a functional capacity test was. I'd know what I had to do and I could have been independent in working it out. I was dependent on another person, I was dependent on and the GP to explain it to me, to work out what I needed and to walk me through it.
Since, can I move forward a little bit? So since that time, the, just that experience of having your financial independence taken away from you. And people who you don't know making decisions about whether you've got capacity to make decisions for yourself. Has that had an impact on you about the way in which either you trust other people or institutions? Or how you feel about yourself?
I listen, well, for myself, I, it's made me a very big observer. Even to the point of estranging myself from myself, I step back all the time and go, I wonder how that sounds to other people. I have to, I constantly say to myself, I wonder how that sounded.
Do you say that because you're worried that depending on what you say, somebody might take that and judge you and say, oh, I wonder if Julie knows what she's talking about or whether, if you say something, they might judge your capacity? Are they the things you're worried about?
Well, I'm not just worried, I know that happens, especially if I'm with someone like a psychiatrist, a neuropsychiatrist or any of the medical profession, I know for sure that they write things without my consent. And, and you know, after the nothing without us, nothing about us without us, that pretty much sums it up. There is so much written about me that I had no consent.
Don't you say nothing about us without us, but also nothing about me without knowing me? Is that an expression I think I've seen you use? And what do you mean by that?
Because, well, I, I want to know what's written down about me. I want to know what words are written down and how it's used to explain my situation. I want to know if a new term like mania is used, that I want to know that that person will explain it to me. I'm quite happy to be called schizophrenic, any label, if they can say that, give me a reason why. You know, I wouldn't be happy, but I'd accept it. But so, so much to my record is written down without any understanding or knowledge of me and without me being able to access it.
How does that feel about your sense of self and how you think about yourself? But also how you think other people will look at you or judge you?
Well, now that I truly am in end-stage Parkinson's, it doesn't really, I don't care anymore. Because, well, certainly, obviously, I fled Brisbane because I felt that, and with right, rightly so. I judged that this was all going to happen again. But in the meantime, before this, I have constantly tried to be out on the edge or outside of this world, that world. I did not want to go to the hospital. I, I, it would have to be the worst possible situation for me to go to the mainland to go to hospital. Because I was too scared.
Have things had an impact on, um, how you feel with respect to your family and your broader circle of friends at all?
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that at all?
I, I don't have one relationship, well, I have one relationship now that I had before all this happened. The rest have imploded. And my family, I can see now the power structure changed. Now, it's not just me, I work from a, my factory default for my family is fiscally incompetent and for most people, I think.
What do you mean by that? Like, you think your family have an assumption or a default view about you that you're unable to manage your finances, so you're fiscally incompetent, is that what you mean by that?
Incompetent, yeah. But also, I think the medical profession do, because they've written, it's written down at different times. She has a history of being found fiscally incompetent, a history.
And you don't know where that really comes from, is that right?
It comes from then knowing about what happened in Bundaberg.
So is that, that sort of sense of that time where you had an interim order in relation to the public trustee? And then having to go to the tribunal for the final hearing, that that sort of holds and defines you?
Yes.
Even though that you were found to be able to manage your finances by yourself?
There's always a chance that will happen. And that moment when you just know, I knew when I, when, when I found out that I had no money. I was wholly dependent on. Back to square one, like when I was married. And I, and I had really ultimately no control. And so, I don't, I, you know, that, that is terrifying.
I want to ask you about a topic again that the Royal Commission will be interested, very interested to hear your views.
Yes.
You've been in a situation where somebody's taken that decision-making away from you and we call that substituted decision-making. But there are times in everybody's life where you need support in terms of making decisions. Have you got any views about the idea of being supported to make decisions at times when you just need a bit of assistance in terms of decision-making? Is that something you've thought about?
I have. I thought, is there any appropriate time for this? And there would have been quite a few times that I would have welcomed it. But I, I, if I'd given, been given a choice about who was with me to help me make those choices. And also, I, I don't, I would think being tested is one thing, but tests don't tell too much, given by a person that doesn't. Tests don't tell you too much unless it's given by a person who knows that person. Because a test given by a person who's got a preset idea or agenda will determine in one way. I know that from being a special needs teacher, you know? And a person, another test given by another person, by my friend, might have a totally different perspective at the end.
So if you need some support at different points in time to make decisions, is it important that the person who supports you is somebody who knows you?
Yeah, well, that I appoint, yeah.
So you decide who?
Now, now, yes. Because I've reached this stage and I'm fully, I'm actually, I don't, I'm not humble. And I know that I'm, I am cognitively more, I'm cognitively clearer than I've ever been in my life. And that's because I've gone, I've chosen to go off the medication which was causing the lack of clarity. I've chosen to go off the medication that was causing the, the urinary tract infections and all of those other ones like dopamine agonists that cause compulsivity and recklessness. I chose to go off those. No matter what the motor, motor symptoms that they helped me work, you know, to decrease. I'd prefer to be, I'd choose clarity of mind every time.
So someone who knows you, someone who you decide is going to support you with decision-making, that would make a difference?
Yeah, and somebody, if, 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 I have to be told that Julie, you just need some explanation why you made these kind of decisions. I want somebody that I know, an advocate that I appoint. That's it. I've been a point, like Carrie Anne, you know, she's named me through all this.
So Carrie Anne's your advocate and supporting you at the moment? She's here as we're recording your evidence today, is that right?
And she has named me through when I was cognitively, you know, far as clear as a bell. She'll know when, when I'm not. But I don't want somebody who's never known me in their life.
To do that. Can I ask you about the one thing which I think you've done in the past is you've given a, a family member or a close friend something called an enduring power of attorney. Have you, do you remember that expression? And some people say, well, an enduring power of attorney is one way of having some supportive decision-making. You might allow somebody to make particular decisions about you or have a timeframe for making decisions. When you've used the enduring power of attorney, why have, why have you taken that step and has that helped you at all?
I suppose at different times, a solicitor has said, look, you know, you're doing your will, you need to have this. It was just a terminology. But then, as the disease progressed, it became a lot more real. And then after the public trustee got involved and took away my, my ability to control my affairs. It's become absolutely crucial that I have someone that I really trust. It's become crystal clear how important that is. And so it's always, you know, it's what you don't have that tells you what you really need. Now I have somebody that I totally trust. I wouldn't, I, I don't, I, I did trust my sister, because she led the charge to have me found fiscally incompetent, unfortunately. So she was my enduring power of attorney at the time, but this all happened. And I suppose I didn't see that coming.
Thank you, Julie. We've been talking about, uh, what might support somebody to make decisions for themselves if they need assistance from time to time. We've just talked about enduring guardians, oh, sorry, enduring power of attorneys. And you wanted to say something a little bit more about public trustees and guardianship, so we'll come back to that topic. And I think you wanted to share with the commissioner some suggestions for what would make a really big difference for people living with disability on the ground. On the ground, in their everyday life. Would you like to tell us about that?
I, I think it's important that we get to choose the people that work with us. And that, and then we can trust them. Trust is such a big issue. I don't have any trust in, it's taken so long to get trust people, and that should never have happened. And I think the main thing is that this, the. For everybody in the world, I think, everybody's an individual and in every moment they change. That you can be sure. And in my life, it's so very important to know that. A functional capacity test that they do today, even in this very moment. Would convey something completely different in about five minutes' time. So it's, it is really a useless tool. The tool, if the public trustee could come up with different tools to gauge, and they should be based firmly in persons' needs. And they should include not just that person, perhaps, but all their family, but the family shouldn't have ultimate say in the end.
Is part of the, the tools really understanding the person? So at the moment, I know you've told us that you're doing some art.
Yes.
You can speak about the tides and the moon and the weather and the changing conditions here on Kangaroo Island. Questions about those things, I think, would really demonstrate your deep knowledge and thinking about issues. And that might be a bit different to ask you whether you know what the current interest rates might be or. Who the Prime Minister of Australia would be.
Or um what teal means.
Or what teal means, okay, if that was a question. So can you, can you tell us at a, at a very practical level, what sorts of tools do you think would assist people who may need. Support from time to time with their decision-making to help them, but also, how do you um. Work out these tests that help people. To really have their best opportunity if they're in a tribunal and somebody's going to have to decide whether. They have capacity and then their decision-making might go from them altogether. What would be good tools to use?
It sounds like for, when worked with me, she said, she told me how it should work. And how it should work seemed to be just the way it should, should, should work. But you see. The way that I was handled wasn't the way that it was set down to be. Everything that was done, said, nothing that was happened with you is supposed to happen. She said, I've only, said to me, I've only seen this guardianship enacted. Twice in my fifty-year career. And she works countless people and she's well respected. Perhaps that's a key. She knows everybody. Make sure that the per, so I guess the thing is, make sure the people that you, the public trustee. Give the power to make these judgments are worth, worthy of that role. That they know how to get to know a person, that they, they value, if it's a community, that they are part of that community. It's more important, I think, to know the person who's assessing that person than person, rather than the person being assessed. Because that's key to it.
Julie, is there anything else you'd like to share with the Royal Commissioners? And I thank you for the time that you've given us today to talk about these very. Important issues in your life, and I know you wanted to share them with the Royal Commission.
Well, even though I talk about this, it seems lightly, I want them to know that. What has happened to me, this public trustee, has actually changed my life completely. I don't have a met family member in my life, which is a tragedy. It's, it's, you can't, and because I don't have a family member in my life. I have no one to family advocate for me. It's left me like, you know, a wolf pack, when, or a sheep, a flock of sheep. When a sheep gets separated from its flock and they're vulnerable, they're torn apart. That's what's happened to me. People say, and the more that I'm isolated from the pack, the more that I've become isolated from my family. The more of a target I become. You just go, and I've constantly looking behind me, waiting for the next attack, the next stab in the back. And sometimes it may not be the way it should be, but I've learned that quite. Quite often I have to trust my instinct and I know when it's coming. And that shouldn't be the way a person lives. That's the way an animal lives. And I've mixed with enough, I've been put in places on the whim of so many people because they just go, oh, she can't be trusted. But I've never had a right of reply, and this is really important to have a right of reply, and so I thank you for that.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you. Commissioners, um, thank you for Julie's evidence and I acknowledge Carrie Anne's presence in the hearing room today. And thank her for her assistance in walking with Julie and supporting her and also working with us. Uh, in the preparation of that evidence. So Commissioners, I think we've also got up on the screen some artwork that Julie has asked us to share. This is a painting that she's done. She can no longer paint with her hands. But she, well, she paints with a brush, but she paints with her hands now. And this is a, a painting that hangs in her little house at Kangaroo Island, and she wanted to share her artwork with you. As her way of expressing that connection that she has to the beautiful place in which she lives. So Commissioners, could I ask you to receive into evidence the video recording, the transcript. The photograph of Julie, which you saw at the commencement of her evidence. And the artwork and mark them as exhibit thirty point zero four four. To thirty point zero four seven.
Yes, the artwork and the other documents can be admitted into evidence with the markings that. Miss Eastman has identified. I would add on behalf of the Commissioners our thanks to Julie and to the support she's received. In order to present her evidence to the commission. We're very grateful for her willingness to do that and. For all of the arrangements that no doubt had to be made for that to occur. So thank you to everybody who has been involved.
Thank you, Chair. Could we adjourn until two o'clock?
Oh, you wish to take lunch now?
Yes.
Yes, all right. We'll adjourn until two. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Uh, Miss Eastman, just before we commence, I'd just like to make sure I've understood something correctly. That I infer from the uh video that we just saw. I take it that the order that was made. Uh, in relation to Julie, at which she spoke, was an interim order under the Queensland Act. Is, is, is my, is my understanding correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And under that act, and I know there's other material that deals with this. The tribunal, if satisfied, have a couple of matters, including that a person may have impaired capacity. And there's an immediate risk of harm to health, welfare or property, can make the order and can do so without a hearing. And without notifying the person who is subject to the order.
That's correct.
Yes, okay, thank you. I wanted to understand.
And we have a panel of advocates now who can tell you a lot about. The use of interim orders, so that may be an issue we'll address now.
Thank you. I've read their statement, so I know they will tell us something. Yes, Miss Eastman.
Uh, so our next witnesses are Matilda Alexander and Dane Kingsford, and I understand they're taking an affirmation.
Yes, thank you very much for, to each of you for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. And thank you for, Ms. Alexander, for your statement, which we have and which we have read. Uh, if you would be good enough to follow the instructions of a member of the O S A team, who is to your right. That person will administer the affirmation to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll now ask Ms. Eastman to ask you some questions.
Might start by some introductions. So, Ms. Alexander, may I start with you?
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Matilda Alexander. I'd like to acknowledge the Wongal people of the land on which we are today. And the Turbo and Jago people of our office back home in Queensland.
Thank you. And with you is Dane Kingsford.
Yes, good afternoon, and I would also like to extend my acknowledgement and respect, my respect to the traditions on the land that we share today.
Right. Thank you both for joining the Royal Commission, and you're both here to speak on behalf of Queensland Advocacy for Inclusion. Can I use the shorthand Q A I?
Absolutely.
I think that might be a little sort of easier. Um, Ms. Alexander, you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission dated the eighteenth of November.
Yes, that's correct.
And have you had a chance to read through the statement?
Yes, I have.
Are there any corrections that you wish to make?
Uh, no, that's, that's all correct.
And the contents are otherwise true, is that right?
That's correct.
Right. So thank you very much for the statement. And you've also provided to the Royal Commission your respective resumes and C Vs. Which I must say are very impressive. So, Ms. Alexander, may I start with you? You hold a range of degrees, including a law degree from Griffith University. And many of your studies at a postgraduate level have involved issues around human rights and inclusion, is that right?
That's correct.
And this year you also participated as a civil society delegate for the United Nations Conference of State Parties. To the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities.
That's correct.
And much of your career has involved advocacy work, including um. The work that you do now as the Chief Executive Officer of Q A I, and that's a position that you've held since March twenty twenty-one, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, now, Mr. Kingsford, you also have a very impressive C V. Thank you for sharing that with us. You also hold a Bachelor of Communications and a Bachelor of Laws. Uh, from the University of Technology in Queensland. I think it's Queensland University of Technology, is that right? Uh, in relation to your law degree. And you also have a Masters of Law from the University of Melbourne.
I'm completing that.
Okay, ongoing, right, close to finishing. And your role at Q A I is the principal solicitor.
That's correct. I'm the, one of the principal solicitors at Q A I. I'm the principal solicitor of the Human Rights Advocacy Practice.
Now, we're in the statement, Ms. Alexander, uh, we talked about this a little earlier. Is that you've identified sort of nine key issues uh that you wish to discuss. But before we launch into that, could you tell the Royal Commission about Q A I? Its role and then the particular functions and work that it does in the area of guardianship and administration. So do you want to start? And then I'm going to open up the issues and we'll work through them.
Thank you very much. So Q A I is an independent, community-based advocacy organisation and community legal service. For um individual and systems advocacy for people with disability. We've existed for over thirty years. And um we are inspired and driven by the work of our management committee, which is a majority of people with disability.
Can I ask you to slow down a little bit?
Yes. So we have been engaged in systems advocacy, including in relation to guardianship matters for over this thirty-year period, including. Um, participating in the original Guardianship Act in Queensland and in many of the reforms of this act. Over the years since. Um, and in particular, we have a human rights advocacy practice. Um, where we employ lawyers and other supports, uh, such as social workers. Uh, and to assist people with disability with guardianship and administration matters that they may be facing. Um, and the purpose of our advocacy there is to ensure the protection of their human rights. In particular, under the Convention on the Rights of People with Disability.
Can I pause there? Um, as you're aware, the terms of reference for this Royal Commission. Speak very strongly to and require the Royal Commission to have regard and apply. Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. When we talk about those rights, what does that actually mean? Either from a values-based approach to your work or a very sort of practical approach to the work that you do?
Well, that convention is, is enshrined in our constitution and Q A I was involved. It, in the U N processes around drafting that, so we have a very long and committed history to that convention. Um, for us, in particular in relation to guardianship, uh, Article twelve is very pertinent and the. Right to legal, legal personhood, to, to legal personality. Um, for all of us, including for people with disability, is a, a really grounding. Inspiration for the work that we do and a reminder to, to us of. Uh, how we should be conducting our, our business.
So does the, the reference to human rights and the approach to human rights. Shape the way in which you deliver your services or conduct your advocacy?
Absolutely. It's a strong part of every submission that we make to the tribunal in these matters. It's a strong part of every systems advocacy piece that we, that we hold forth. So. It really forms a basis for both the practical one-on-one work we do with people and the broader systemic advocacy.
Right. Now, what, what you've said to the Royal Commission in your statement is that Q A I. Are seeing an upward trend in demands for your advice and services, and this is paragraph twelve. And some of this has been uh relevant to the rollout of the N D I S in Queensland. And uh, I, is it your sort of sense that the. Beginning of the N D I S and now the N D I S that are well into Queensland has. Been the direct result of the increase in the supports that you are asked to provide? Trying to understand these trends.
Yeah, certainly, um, the, the trends do speak to an increase in the demand for our services. So we see a consistent increase in the advice, legal advice that we're giving. Um, you can, you can't see a commensurate increase in the amount of representation we're providing, and that's simply because we don't have an increase in resourcing. For delivering those services despite many funding applications to the government asking for additional resources. So um you can see the, the increase in demand through those increase in advices from twenty-five. In the twenty fifteen sixteen year to what we anticipate will be one hundred and seventy-four in this financial year.
Can I just ask you while we're on the question of funding, so and I think you made the point that the. Upward trend hasn't been met with an increase in funding or resources for Q A I. What's the primary source of funding for the, the service?
For our guardianship programme, it is uh justice funding, justice and attorney general funding through the Community Legal Centre Programme, so the National. Um, Legal Assistant, the N L A F programme.
Right. So I wanted to turn to um. Some of the issues that you've raised and uh what we might do is I'll summarize sort of what they all are. And then let's go back and talk about some of the issues and we'll do our best in the time available. So the issues that you've raised, and Commissioners, there's nine issues, is the complexity of. Decision-making support, legal representation. Applications made without the knowledge of a person, the impact of the N D I S, interim orders. Capacity and determining capacity, the lack of public information, confidentiality. And in relation to the public trustee transparency and fees in particular. And you've also made some recommendations for the Royal Commissioners to consider. A paragraph seventy-four and following in relation to a shift towards supportive decision-making away from. The substitute decision-making. So capturing all of those issues. Let's start with the complexity of decision-making and support. And Commissioners, if we're following along with the statement, this starts. At paragraph nineteen and following. The way you describe how we approach decision-making. And why decision-making can be very complex at times, it's a really important first step, isn't it? If we're going to talk about substitute or supportive decision-making. Do we not have to be very clear about what we're talking about when we understand the concept of decision-making? And you've addressed this in the statement. So again, either whoever would like to. And you've addressed this in the statement. So again, whoever would like to start off on that issue, what would you like to tell us about how QAI has addressed decision-making and the nuance in the complexity of decision-making?
We have provided a case study in here, the case study of Tracy, which is a example of how much work does need to go into good, supported decision-making. This is not a process that's necessarily efficient. It's not a process that will lead to the quickest outcomes or the easiest outcomes, the way substitute decision-making sometimes can be seen to. But it is a process that supports a person's inherent personhood and human rights. So we can see here, the, this case study demonstrates how much work needs to go in.
If the commissioners are following, your statement for each of these topics has a particular case study that's based on a client who you've de-identified by name and also in any other way that might disclose the identity of the person and then set out the issues relevant to that topic. So Tracy's case study starts at paragraph twenty-five, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Would you like me to talk through the case study? Yes, yeah. So Tracy came to us through a federally funded programme that we operate. We've got over ten different programmes at QAI. Some of those are disability advocacy programmes. So this is not a legal representative. This is a disability advocate who's been assisting Tracy to prepare for and then actualise her NDIS plan. So working with Tracy in the lead-up to her plan to prepare a document to give to the local area coordinator. Tracy had multiple psychosocial disabilities as well as regular migraines, and they really affected her ability to function. And she was unable to make even basic decisions about her day-to-day and especially more complex matters. But that only happened about one week per month. So it takes time. You have to talk to her at the right time. You have to have, and we had to have face-to-face meetings for those to, for that relationship to develop, for that trust to develop. And over that time, we were able to talk to her about some of the individual choices that she made and that, and the values that were important to her as an individual that might or might not be the same values that that advocate holds.
Is that different to coming in and saying, this is what's in your best interests? What's the difference to that approach, to the approach you're describing?
Absolutely. So it's an approach that is grounded in the will and preferences of, in this case, study Tracy. So what is her particular unique characteristics? What is important to her? So in her instance, alternative medicines were, a alternative healing was an important thing for her. And also privacy was very, very much a very important primary consideration. And one of her greatest fears of going into the NDIS was because she had in the past been involved with the disability sector, and she was very worried about her privacy. And those, those concerns and those values are legitimate aspects of her legal personhood. So it may have been easy for somebody to come in and say, don't worry about those things. There's federal privacy protections, there's, you know, alternative medicine doesn't work. But that doesn't accord with who she is as a person. So to work with her around those concerns over a long period of time, face-to-face, and in order to develop that trust, in order to provide her with current guidelines and, and information about, about privacy, what is she protected by, what complaints mechanisms? But ultimately to then support her to make the decisions that she, that are still what she desires and, and to give effect to her designs around her NDIS plan.
Can I ask you this? So if you think about the complexity of decision-making, for some people, they may need lifelong support in sorting out problems and making decisions. For other people, there might be a very acute period of time where they require support. One of the acute periods of time might be if somebody has an admission to hospital. There may be a period of mental illness. When we're thinking about support for decision-making, have, what's been your experience for people who are in that acute situation? They may be in hospital and decisions about what might happen to them after they leave hospital. What's involved in supporting people with decision-making at that point in time?
Yeah, certainly we see guardianship and administration orders can be seen as this efficient pathway to de-institutionalisation or getting people out of hospital institutional environments. But it is, in our view, an unacceptable trade-off of rights to gain your, to gain your liberty at the expense of your legal personhood.
What do you mean by that? What are you trading off?
So if you, if you were to, we've had guardianship applications where they say this is being made to assist with discharge planning or appointing a third party such as, such as the Office of the Public Guardian rather than a family member or giving the person their own autonomy, will simplify the process. So it's no doubt that often a guardianship order will get somebody out of hospital quicker. But what they are sacrificing is those rights that are protected under Article twelve of the Convention in that respect, their legal personhood. And we think that is, that is an unacceptable, that is an unacceptable trade-off that doesn't need to happen. And if you provide a level of adequate supportive decision-making in a hospital framework, you can still have outcomes that result in that person being able to return home, but in a way that they retain their own legal personhood. And we have examples as well where in Queensland you can be charged to stay in hospital after your thirty, after thirty days. You can be charged rent and guardianship applications being brought or, or administration applications in order to effectively collect that rent. So these kind of things are about efficiency rather than human rights, and we do not see that as being an appropriate way to deal with the problems.
I turn to the second issue, which is the lack of advice, lack of access to legal advice or legal representation. And these issues arise in terms of whether an application may be made for guardianship or financial administration. It may arise in circumstances where these applications may be brought by a family member, if there is a dispute between family members, or in circumstances where there is no person who can step into that role, the appointment of a public guardian or the public trustee. You've said in the statement that you're aware that there's an unmet demand in the community for ongoing legal support and legal representation in relation to guardianship and administration issues, and QAI is only able to provide some services. What happens if you're not able to provide services and there's no other legal support available? What do you see as the problems arising for people with disability? Who wants to take that question?
QAI and other organisations that provide this limited representation are really just the tip of a very large iceberg. So that very large majority of people facing these proceedings are doing so unrepresented by a lawyer, usually without a disability advocate or another qualified support person. And these are incredibly complicated matters for somebody, for a layperson to be dealing with. There are complex legal and medicolegal framework where there is a legal test that is very relevant, but there's also medical evidence to be unpacked and critically analysed.
So some might say, in the tribunal, the rules of evidence don't apply. It's not as sort of formal as the way in which court proceedings might be conducted. And is there really a need for lawyers in that process? What do you say to that?
I, I think we would say certainly there is in relation to our clients, the adults that are subject to the applications or the orders. We see it as unfair power imbalance where the applicants or the other parties to those orders or applications are often government entities well versed in the sector and with unlimited resources to support that person at the hearing, whereas the person subject to the order or the application might go in not having representative, sorry, not having, have access to legal advice to know how the process might work, it might be their first time. They might not know the material that's before the tribunal, because they might not know how to access that. And they might not know the legal tests that's to be applied.
They might not know the legal language used in a forum like that. Is that be right?
That would be right.
Okay. Can I ask you about the next topic, which is applications being lodged without a person's knowledge and consent? And I don't know if you were in the hearing room earlier, and you may have heard Julie's evidence about not knowing about an application that had been made, that was an interim application that had been made. And you say some of QAI's clients have reported instances of applications being made and orders being made without their knowledge and consent. And you've given the case study example of Wendy. Do you want to speak to that example and the implications for a person if the orders are made when they have no knowledge of it?
Certainly, we've heard of things like comments such as, we're, we're applying for something to help you get you out of hospital, or even less information than that being given to clients, clients who, as, as Julie described, had no idea that the matter was being made. And there, there is, I think, a procedural deficit in the notification process compared to some other legal proceedings where there is required to be, say, a, an affidavit of service. There is a ticker box saying that you've informed the person, but no description of when that took place, how that took place, whether or not you just said, we're, we're going to try and help get you out of hospital, and that was considered sufficient. So in our, in our case study of Wendy, she wasn't consulted. She went to hospital after she became unwell and was put in a mental health unit after the death of her lifelong partner. And in that time, her brothers made applications for interim and substantive orders that she was unaware of until after the interim order. So, and I would add as well, Wendy has no guardianship orders or administration orders over her now. But in that instance, her brothers were becoming increasingly controlling. So an order was put giving them power over her, power over her legal personhood that she was not advised of, had no, and so consequently had no ability to dispute. And she noticed that money was disappearing from her bank accounts without any communication or justification. So with our assistance, she was able to have those, her brothers removed from that position, and she currently has no orders.
What can a person do if they discover that there's orders made about them? And we've heard the language of being under orders and the like. And what steps can people take to challenge those orders? Is there any process in Queensland that allow you to get in, back into the tribunal as quickly as the interim orders might have been made? What happens then?
It's a really great question. Oftentimes, the interim orders are made for a maximum period of three months. They can be renewed for a further three if a certain criteria is met. However, ordinarily after that three-month period, there is a substantive hearing where an order, where an application for the substantive order will be determined and an order potentially made with a maximum period potentially of up to five years, except unless it's the appointment of the public trustee as the administrator, where there's no statutory maximum period.
What does that mean? It can continue forever?
It can continue for, until further ordered by the tribunal potentially, which would then place the onus on the adult subject to that order to make an application for review or an application for a declaration about capacity.
In your experience, in the ordinary course, when orders are made, are the people to whom the orders apply routinely advised as to what their appeal rights may be or options to challenge the order or options to make an application to revoke the order?
In, when, when the decision's handed out and sent in the mail, there's a, like a pamphlet that comes with it that outlines the, the adult's rights to appeal. However, that's increasing. It is a, I guess, a tremendous feat that we don't often do assistance in, because it is very resource-intensive. But there's no information about applying for a review, for example, if there's been a change in circumstances that might allow for a review to occur.
And that's why we've developed our fact sheets on those exact topics, because there was a lack of publicly available information in, in easy, in plain English to help people to know how to challenge those reviews. And it's not just about how to fill in the Form ten. It's not just about a form. It's about getting the relevant medical evidence as well.
And that might, if I can touch on the interim order point that you've raised, because you've drawn the Royal Commission's attention to a provision in the legislation that allows QCAT to make interim orders without a contested hearing and without otherwise complying with the requirements of the Act. And interim orders are usually made on the papers unless an advocate is involved. And interim orders are not subject to review in the three-month period that they may be in place. To, in what circumstances have you seen your clients be subject to interim orders? Is there a particular sort of trigger for an interim order to be made as opposed to waiting a little bit more time and then seeking a substantive or a longer-term order? Mr Kingsford, do you want to speak to that?
I might just be able to give some, yeah, some thoughts. It might be where there's a perceived risk from maybe like a service provider of some sort or a family member for the adult, if they're potentially going to, you know, terminate their service agreement to change providers, for example, or look for different accommodation or their lease might be running up. And rather than supporting the adult to make decisions to, that they might see necessary, they'll make an application for an interim order as a sort of, I guess, a Band-Aid measure to, to keep things as the status quo until the, the issues can be sorted out.
Is it generally that the interim orders are always made for a three-month period? Or have you, in your experience, seen interim orders for shorter periods of time? Like twenty-four hours, if that's what's necessary?
No, I don't. I believe I've only seen them for, it's sort of described in a way that it will be current until further order or three months.
So coming back to the human beings who are the subject of these orders, three months for lawyers might not sound like a long time, but three months for human beings might be a fairly long period of time. And we heard Julie's story earlier today of trying to pay a Telstra bill and the bank teller telling her, by the way, you're under orders because you're not capable of managing your finances. Julie's story was one of what does she do if she feels that she's got no financial control in her life? If a person's in that situation and the clock is sort of on for three months, what, what options are open to people like Julie in those circumstances?
In terms of, I guess, carrying on with their life, is that what you, yes. So I guess it makes it quite challenging, also that their legal personhood's been removed. Often times where they're not, they might not be aware that that's occurred. So they might just receive the interim order in the mail, for example. And they might be stuck in a situation where they don't want to be, and they might not feel safe necessarily to be.
So one of our case studies talked about an NDIS provider who brought the application and the email documents say that they were worried about losing their ninety thousand dollar client. So three months is enough time that you can lose your accommodation or be forced to stay, stay in accommodation where you've made a complaint about the service provider, where you're not feeling safe, where not, it's, it's not where you want to be living three months with, with somebody having control over, you know, all the important things of your life, where you live, who's providing your day-to-day services, you know, whether you can buy a Christmas present for your mother. Like, it's, it really comes down to really essential parts of who we are as people. And we find that.
If, if, can I ask this question? If Julie had come to you two days after the interim order was made, is there anything you could have done about that order?
Without exceptional circumstances, because the interim, the interim order is only subject to review in exceptional circumstances by a legal member. in exceptional circumstances by a legal member.
Why couldn't you apply for a stay under one twenty eight? At the end.
I might have to take that on notice if that's okay and revert back.
I mean, it's a very unusual situation. I understand completely the difficulties of an interim order without notice. I understand that it will be made for a maximum of three months. But it would be a rather unusual situation for there to be no opportunity for someone properly advised and with appropriate representation, and I understand the difficulties about that. But it would be an extraordinary situation if they couldn't challenge the order in some way. And I would have thought section one hundred and twenty eight provides you, provides someone wanting to challenge it with the opportunity to say, could we have a stay, please? This was made in ill-advised circumstances.
So take that.
Anyway, if you need to, if you need to take that on notice, please do.
So oh I've related to that uh question, I wanted to ask you about some other consequences, if any, for an interim order. So ordinarily, the orders are made because the tribunal has to be satisfied that an adult has impaired capacity for the matter and there is a need for a decision in relation to the matter or the adult is likely to do something in relation to the matter that involves or is likely to involve unreasonable risk to the adult's health, welfare or property. And without an appointment, the adult's needs will not be adequately met or the adult's interests will not be adequately protected. And then the tribunal can make an appointment on terms that the tribunal considers appropriate. The definition of impaired capacity is for a person for a matter means a person who does not have capacity for the matter. Slightly circular when it comes to capacity. And then capacity is defined as for a person for a matter means a person is capable of understanding the nature and effect of the decisions about the matter and freely and voluntarily making decisions about the matter and communicating the decisions in some way. If the an interim order is made and what sits behind the interim order is an assumption that a person has impaired capacity. When it comes to, say, final orders being made or substantive orders being made, does the person have to prove that they have capacity? Or does the assumption or the presumption that they have capacity continue even if the interim order's been made? So I know that's sort of quite a big thing to ask you, but the essence of it is onus of proof on capacity and the impact of an interim order on dealing with capacity uh further down the track. Who wants to take that one?
And there uh there is a difference between what it says in the law and the reality of how.
Surely not.
Because, of course, the the law does state that um, as you said, decision making is domain and time specific and that um somebody retains their capacity, it's up to the um person bringing the application to show legally speaking that that person has lost their capacity and that they still have lost their capacity after the interim order. However, the practical effect of having that order in place means that our clients generally have to um go and obtain, say, medical evidence. We've got a case study in here of a man who had to pay two thousand five hundred dollars to get medical evidence to prove his capacity after an interim order.
So just pause it, that's Bart's case study and Bart's an N D I S participant.
That's correct.
And I assume Bart may be in the seat of some form of disability support pension, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and so he had to bear the cost of getting a medical report to prove he had capacity.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, the difference between in practice and what what's written in the law. When you don't adequately provide for the supports that people need to realise their rights through legislation.
Can I get a clarification? The the fact that he was an N D I S participant suggests that this is a reasonably recent matter on within, say, five years or so, is that right? Not talking about ancient history, there's something.
Yes, that's right, I couldn't I couldn't give you the exact date, but it's within this last month, okay.
All right, so I think the next topic I wanted to ask you about was the lack of public information. And you provided in the statement references to a wide range of publications that Q I A have developed, so a handbook in terms of using system and also various fact sheets and the like. The Royal Commission's heard that people find it difficult to understand these systems. And you may have heard Suzanne Nunn's evidence earlier today saying, there's a plethora of information out there, but it's really confusing to know where to go, what to do and what your rights are in effect. You've identified the lack of publicly available information in your statement. Um and one issue you've raised is this, you've said in May twenty twenty, Q C A's Guardianship Bench Book was launched, but the Bench Book is not publicly available. Why would it be important to have the opportunity to see the Bench Book?
I guess so that there is that level of broader scale procedural fairness. If the if the bench uh the members are operating off one set of criteria and um and we're not able to view that criteria and and people facing um that kind of criteria, that that those proceedings are not able to view it, there's certainly a a deficit in um understanding the process, understanding the relevant criterias um and making sure we're all just on the page and open and transparent process.
May I ask, what is a Bench Book?
Um, do you, I'm I can't give evidence. Get far away. Um there are a number of different Bench Books that guide um judicial and and tribunal decision makers in how to do particular aspects of their work. There's a domestic violence Bench Book, there's um one to do with an equal treatment Bench Book that that says how to treat, say, witnesses with disability. Um so this is, uh we haven't seen a copy of this one because it's not publicly available, but that's generally speaking, it's a kind of how to guide for the judiciary.
So so could I put this to you? If we're talking about Bench Books, we're talking about some publications that may be prepared by uh the Judicial Commission or some other relevant body to bring together the relevant case law, the relevant principles and be a a guide for judges having to make decisions in particular areas. The Bench Book particularly for a tribunal, for example, might assist in consistency of decision making if there are uh tribunal members who serve on a part time or casual basis. And a Bench Book might be a way of building transparency into the process so that people who may be in court would have the opportunity to see, well, this is what the judge is reading when she or he thinks about making their decision. And it helps me to look at the same type of information to know what I might be going into. Would that be the way in which you would think about the use of a Bench Book?
Yeah, absolutely, and usually they are publicly available because it lends lends a level of accountability. You can say, look, you haven't complied with a certain section of the Bench Book, or you can make submissions that, you know, the Bench Book supports a certain approach. And we do see that in these matters, there is um a wide variety of approaches that members can take. There's a very few number of uh published decisions in these areas, a very um and yeah, and we do get very different approaches. So, for example, um if our clients have tried to make raise complaints about the way that the public trustee or the public guardian have handled their matters in the past, sometimes we're told this, we're not going to entertain any discussion about that. And then other times they're asked questions or um, you know, there seems to be very little little information, a little understanding of what those roles are from the members. So there can be, I think, the a a Bench Book would aid in um consistent decision making and transparency.
Now, how do you know there was a Bench Book launched in May twenty twenty?
As.
I understand and I can still check, I believe it was published in the annual report, sorry, in the Q C A's annual report.
Right, um commissioners, the Royal Commission issued a notice requiring the production of the Bench Book uh with respect to the description in paragraph sixty of the statement. That notice was returnable on Friday. There has been no production and no explanation for the production. Uh it may be a matter that I may need to raise with Miss McMillan during the course of the afternoon. It would assist the Royal Commission to have the opportunity to uh see the Bench Book um and that the notice be answered. Right, can I turn to the topic of confidentiality and lack of transparency? This is an issue that uh you've raised in particular uh for fee structures in place for the public trustee in Queensland, is that right?
Uh, yes.
And there has been a a review and I think a a published report in relation to fees and fee structures for the Queensland Public Trustee, is that right?
That's correct, the Office of the Public Advocate produced a report detailing a number of recommendations. Um a a few of those recommendations have been implemented, but certainly not um the majority so far. Um they are progressively working towards that. And um there has been more recently a review of fees and charges produced um requested internally by the by the public trustee um from a private firm.
And you've provided the case study of Julia to illustrate where that lack of transparency has an impact on people's rights and understanding in relation to their financial affairs, how their money might be used to service the public trustee that steps in to make decisions for them, is that right?
Yeah, certainly, we're very concerned that um vulnerable Queenslanders who don't have a choice having their matters um run by the public trustee are ending up paying for this um broader uh service. So we we do believe that that should be a publicly funded service rather than something that the public trustee has to self generate fees for.
And another aspect of transparency is confidentiality. And you've identified in the Queensland legislation that there is a section that prohibits the publication of information about a guardianship proceeding to the tribunal and also some limitations on what documents can be accessed with respect to hearings. It it might be said that the confidentiality proceedings have been included in legislation of this kind to protect vulnerable people. If um the disclosure of details around somebody being subject to an application and then orders in relation to guardianship or administration might cause that person's privacy uh to be interfered with, then don't these provisions in the legislation strike the balance between protecting privacy? And that's a compromise that has to be made?
Certainly, many terrible things have been done in the name of protecting vulnerable people over the years in Australia's history. Um and this one is one that I think needs to be consigned to the to the history bins. Um this is, this is a one, this is a provision that the Office of the Public Advocate in Queensland has recently recommended the repeal of. Um and it's, it provides an instance where publication um is prohibited about guardianship proceedings. And that includes where the actual guardianship proceeding was an unmeritorious or frivolous complaint. So somebody who's put through all of these things that we've been hearing from the witnesses this morning, all of these things we're hearing from our clients and found that they do have capacity, then is deprived of their right to tell their story, to tell, to talk about what's happened. And we, and there are some um ways that you can apply either in court or to Q C A to have that story told. And I think that the case study that we, the information we provided in there in relation to the case um that we've detailed, that paragraph sixty seven shows why this is absolutely not a sufficient balance of um somebody's, somebody's rights. So it took us a year for, so our client wanted to tell his story, he wanted to tell it to the media. We applied for a an order from Q C A for him to do so. A year later, Q C A come back with a decision um saying that um he can tell his story, but that story cannot be published. So then the media outlet would need to make another application to publish it. So it's it's um a very lengthy process that took a lot of legal time and ended up with a very insufficient result. So the repe- the repeal of this section, um coupled with the recommendations from the Office of the Public Advocate in their recent report for protections such as the consider, the member could still consider whether or not a confidentiality provision is appropriate at the time of making their individual decision. Um that that would still be retained under the repeal, but it would become, rather than an automatic process, it would become a discretionary process that was recently adapted to the least restrictive approach on a person's human rights, including their right to freedom of expression.
What would that, would that mean in practice? That perhaps the person who's the subject of the order may be able to indicate what their views are in relation to the confidentiality or privacy arrangements around them? Could that be a way of factoring in, striking the balance between privacy and um and rights?
Yes, I think that that is correct. And I I think it um the the position that all material, we must do everything to protect the person sort of um removes the person's dignity of of risk in. Um I can appreciate that some material before the tribunal in these matters is quite personal, of course. Um but it tends to suggest that the person's not in control of making the decision as to what they deem appropriate as public knowledge. And I think if inconsistent with what I understand the public advocates new recommendations are, is that it will allow the adult at that point in time, if if they're concerned with a particular um piece of material that's before the tribunal to apply for a confidentiality order, for example, over that document.
Right.
You know, if anybody or any institution has applied to a court uh in proceedings that would seek to interpret section one hundred and fourteen A subsection two of the Act, I ask because um your paragraph sixty three doesn't actually reproduce the entirety of section one hundred and fourteen A two, which includes the words without reasonable excuse. Now, without providing legal advice, I would have thought that if a person's subject to an order wanted to make public her concern at what had happened by reason of a, an injustice that she says has been caused, there would at least be an arguable case to say that person, by revealing her own identity, um is acting with a reasonable excuse. Has anybody ever tested that?
There is a case, um thank you Chair, that I can I can provide to the tribunal, uh sorry, to the commission after this um where they do discuss, there was alleged contravention of the section um where they did attempt to interpret, but there's minimal case law on this. And I'm, um, I think there's maybe only a few tribunal decisions that discuss it. I'm not sure if there's a Queensland Supreme.
Sometimes three little words can open very large doors. Anyway, carry on.
So I'm just conscious of the time and I know the commissioners may have some questions for you. Uh from paragraph seventy four and following in the statement, you set out some recommendations in terms of areas of reform or change to implement supportive decision making models that are are consistent with the C R P D to improve community understanding of decisions, support needs with people with disability and to reform the guardianship legal framework. Can I thank you for providing us with those very detailed and comprehensive recommendations? And the commission's also aware of submissions that have been provided. But I might ask the commissioners if they have any questions that they want to ask you, including anything arising from your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um if it's all right with you, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. First, I'll ask Commissioner McEwan.
Uh thank you, Chair. Uh thank you both for your evidence. I have a question. At the beginning, Mister Alexander, you said that um Article twelve of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability is foundational to your work. And that paragraph seventy four, you recommend uh implementation of a supportive decision making model that is consistent with the C R P D. What facts do you think we should be considering in light of the Australian Government interpretive declaration? Can you help us with our thinking on that?
Um, I guess Q A I's position is that we are not in favour of that interpretive declaration. We feel that that does water down um the C R P D Article twelve and that it's not consistent with the the approach that other countries have taken to Article twelve. Um so we would urge um that that interpretive declaration be reconsidered. Um that human rights do not be, we we don't have a need to water down human rights here, we should really be aiming. a need to water down human rights here. We should really be aiming for those, as other countries do, to fully implement Article twelve.
Yep. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thanks. Can I just clarify something? You you've put a very strong case for the use of supportive decision making almost exclusively. You take the view that guardianship is actually something that's unnecessary? Or do you think that it has an appropriate role to play?
So we we are in favour of the absolutist position in the in Article twelve, that taking away somebody's legal personhood is something that deprives them unnecessarily deprives them of their of their human rights. We do believe that supportive decision making, if fully implemented, if fully funded, would would in fact remove the need for for guardianship. That is my understanding of the international position on can the Convention on the Rights of People with Disability.
I just wanted to ask you about you in your section about fees, you referred, I take it you're referring to the, I looked up the the website that you suggested, and there's a six level table for the personal administration. Is that the table you were referring to in your in your statement? And I was just going to ask, the one thing I wasn't able to find is what is the hardship clause? And can you give us any understanding of what that is and how it's applied?
Sorry, Commissioner, which paragraph was that that you referred?
Had my finger on the, I moved it.
If it's too much hassle, we can go back and look through the statement in more detail and provide.
Oh, here it is. It's seventy one. It's the case study of Julia.
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. I believe we're talking about the same table with the six.
Yes.
Yes.
But also, what's the hardship clause?
I I understand that that is the that there's a rebate that's applied to certain clients that are subject to administration orders if they need to set a criteria where the the full amount of the fee that is charged is reduced or given back.
Would that standardly be applied to someone on a disability support pension, for example? Because some of those fees go up to nearly twenty five percent of the DSP.
Or even higher in in some instances. Yeah, so it is important to have the rebate provisions. I guess we can't say whether it's a standard that it is always applied. We're aware of instances where it hasn't been, whether or not that's an administrative error or a policy, or whether it's it's probably something that you would need to address, a question to the public trustee.
Thanks, Mr Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you very much for coming to the commission and giving evidence and for the statement. That has been the subject of questioning and evidence today. We appreciate the assistance you have provided to the Royal Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Just before we conclude, Miss McMillan is on her feet. I'm not sure what she wants to raise.
I just have one question. It's probably quick, more.
Yes, if you have if you have just one question, please go ahead.
I do just have one question. Thank you. Mr Kingston, is it the case that you're currently appealing a decision of QCAT in relation to section one hundred and fourteen capital A?
That's correct.
And it's a matter of BJ two thousand and twenty two, QCAT three two six? Is that the decision?
I understand that that's the citation.
All right, you're involved in that matter.
That's correct.
And you're also aware, are you not, of a decision of Justice Dalton's in IBC in Pearson?
I I I could, I'm not sure I could answer that question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I shall read whatever is available with great interest. Thank you. Ms Eastman, do we now take a break or do we continue?
First of all, thank Mr Kingston and Miss Alexander for their evidence today. And could you receive into evidence the statement and accompanying documents and mark them exhibit thirty point zero four eight through to zero thirty zero five one?
Right. So those documents will be admitted into evidence with the markings exhibit thirty point oh four eight to thirty point oh five one. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair, if we have a short adjournment of ten minutes, and with the agreement of the public guardian and the public trustee, we are going, well, I will take their evidence together. So they're both separate entities, they're both separate statutory appointees. But I was concerned about the time this afternoon, and they've kindly agreed that they're happy to take their evidence together. There's a few common themes that might be helpful for their evidence to be heard at the same time.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It's just after three P M Sydney time. Perhaps if we resume at three fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Commissioners. We see agreement of the Queensland Public Trustee and the Queensland Public Guardian. I'll take the evidence together. So we have Mr Samai Juhan, the Queensland Public Trustee, and Miss Shayna Smith, the Queensland Public Guardian. And I think we're both taking an oath, is that right?
Ms Smith and Mr Juhan, I have that the correct pronunciation of your name.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you very much for coming to the commission to give evidence. And thank you both for the very detailed statements that you have made in response to questions asked on behalf of the Royal Commission. We appreciate your attendance. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of the associate who will write, who will administer the oath to you.
I will read the affirmation. At the end, at the end, please say yes or I do. Do solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. I thought we were doing oaths, but on affirmation. But I think we're fine now.
We are. So thank you, Ms Eastman. Ms Eastman, we'll now ask you some questions. Thank you.
Mr Juhan, may I start with you? You are the public trustee of Queensland and the Chief Executive Officer of Public Trustee, is that right?
That's correct.
You provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the tenth of November this year, is that right?
That's correct.
Are there any corrections or amendments to the statement?
No.
And the statement's otherwise true and correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms Smith, welcome back to the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
You last gave evidence, I understand, at public hearing six, when the Royal Commission was conducting its inquiry in relation to psychotropic medication. Yes. You have prepared a statement dated the eleventh of November twenty twenty two.
Yes, correct.
You've got one correction to paragraph seventy seven. And you want to change the number three hundred and thirty six? And the correct number should be two hundred and fifty one.
That's correct.
Other than that correction, are the contents of the statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Now, both of you, I think, have been in the hearing room today or have watched the evidence over the course of the day, is that right?
Yes.
I I wasn't able to.
So have you been appraised of what's occurred in terms of the evidence during the course of the day?
In broad terms.
Okay. But and have you had an opportunity to look at any of the statements at all in relation to the witnesses, either by the transcript, video recording, or their written statements?
I have reviewed the original statements, but I have been advised that due to confidentiality and privacy considerations, I'm unable to speak about them.
About the content of the statements.
That's right.
For the purpose of your evidence this afternoon, I'm not going to ask you to comment on any of the particular individual circumstances that were raised in the evidence that the Royal Commission has heard this morning. But there are a number of systemic issues that arise, and that will be the focus of the evidence and the questions that I want to ask you this afternoon. So can I start with you, Mr Juhan? You have held the role as the acting public trustee of Queensland and the Chief Executive Officer since June twenty nineteen, and you were appointed permanently to the role in May twenty twenty one, is that right?
That's correct.
And you hold a statutory office by way of an appointment from the Governor in Council pursuant to section nine of the Public Trustee Act of Queensland, is that right?
That's correct.
And with respect to your functions, you've got functions as a public officer under financial accountability obligations, is that right, in the Financial Accountability Act? And the Public Trustee Act, together with the Guardianship and Administration Act, set out some of your powers, is that right?
That's correct.
And also describe some of your functions. In terms of your functions, you've told the Royal Commission at paragraph nine and following that there are a number of functions. But I want to just ask you about paragraph thirteen. This describes the public trustee's main services to customers, and it's provided through what is called customer experience and delivery. Is that a term that's used in any legislation?
No, it isn't.
And what's the genesis or origin of?
It is, we've got multiple divisions within the public trustee, and it is our customer operations division, which was created two years ago as part of our reforms, moving from substitute toward a more supportive decision making model.
Right. So in terms of looking at the customer experience and delivery programme, there's five aspects to that. The first is the preparation of wills and enduring powers of attorney. The second is administering deceased estates, where the public trustee is appointed as an executor under a will or as an administrator on intestacy, is that right?
Correct.
The third is acting as trustee, and that might be for a range of particular trusts. The fourth is acting as administrator, and that is where the public trustee may be appointed as an administrator under the Guardianship and Administration Act for an adult with impaired capacity for a matter. And that's the topic that we're mostly going to focus on today. And also acting as attorney for a principal's financial matter when appointed under an enduring power of attorney under the Powers of Attorneys Act. So that's the the sort of broad areas where the public trustee provides service. And each of these functions are supported by particular provisions in statute, is that right?
That's right.
And in terms of the delivery of these services, it's done pursuant to some internal policies and practices that you expect those holding the relevant functions to comply with, is that right?
That's correct.
Right. Thank you for dealing with that so quickly with me. Ms Smith, can I turn to you? You have given evidence before in relation to your functions. And I think last time we spoke to you, you were, you told us that you had joined the Office of the Public Guardian in twenty fifteen as the Deputy Public Guardian.
That's correct.
And then you commenced as acting as the Public Guardian in March twenty twenty?
Yes.
And then the Governor and Council appointed you to that role in June twenty twenty one?
That's correct.
And you are also a statutory office holder?
Yes.
In terms of your particular functions, they are set out in legislation called the Public Guardian Act two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
And some of those functions you've described in paragraph six of your statement?
Yes.
And that's by reference to section twelve of the Public Guardian Act. And can I describe the functions this way? If I do it in too much of a paraphrase or a shorthand, tell me. Your functions primarily are concerned with adults with impaired decision making capacity in a range of matters.
Yes.
It's protecting the adult from neglect, exploitation, or abuse, providing a programme called the Community Visitor Programme, investigating complaints and allegations by an attorney, a guardian, or administrator, or another person acting or purporting to act under a power of attorney, advance health directive, or an order of the tribunal made in relation to guardianship or administration, is that right?
Correct.
You may also have a role mediating and conciliating between attorneys, guardians, and administrators, is that right?
Correct.
When we're talking administrators, we're not talking Mr Juhan, who's sitting next to you as the public trustee, are we?
No.
We are talking about administrators who may be family members or other individuals for whom an order is made by the tribunal. You may also act as attorney in some circumstances. And the topics that we want to talk about today is the role of acting as a guardian if appointed by QCAT, is that right?
Yes.
You also have a range of functions in relation to children, and that's set out in section thirteen of the Act, is that right?
Correct.
And I think last time we spoke to you, our focus was on children for the most part.
Um, no, I believe it was adults.
I thought we asked you some.
We did touch on children, but particularly adults.
All right. So in terms of the various functions and powers that you exercise, are we right in understanding that for both offices, the legislation is really the key and critical starting point for identifying both your functions and the exercise of particular powers?
Yes.
And on the topics that this Royal Commission is concerned with, essentially, these are functions that you both exercise in relation to a person who may have impaired capacity. And that's an expression used in the Guardianship and Administration Act. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Now, we spoke a little earlier to QAI about the concept of impaired capacity. And I wanted to ask each of you in relation to your particular responsibilities, is do you have an internal working definition or guideline about how you identify if an adult has impaired capacity? Mr Juhan, can I start with you first?
So we don't have a specific definition within our policies and procedures. We generally follow the decisions of QCAT. And one of the things we have done as part of our reforms in recent times is establish the financial independence pathway, where we work with customers. If they feel they have capacity, we work with them to develop their skills in terms of financial administration.
Can I, sorry to interrupt you there. I do want to ask you some questions about that further down the track. But I want to start to make sure that the Royal Commissioners know how you, in discharging the statutory functions that you have, understand the meaning of impaired capacity and how that's defined or dealt with internally.
So our understanding, or my understanding of impaired capacity, is that there is a lack of understanding in terms of certain financial matters, that there is an inability to appropriately communicate their understanding regarding financial matters, and that there are risks from a safeguard perspective in terms of undue influence as part of that. So those key elements are present, it does impact capacity.
And Ms Smith, in terms of your office, have you approached identifying what impaired capacity means?
Well, we would act upon the tribunal's decision on capacity. If the public guardian becomes appointed, section eleven of the Guardianship and Administration Act does state that we're not required to presume they have capacity if the court or tribunal has appointed a guardian, and also states that in the exercise of the functions and powers, we're able to rely on that declaration. And also states that um in the exercise of the functions and powers, we're able to rely on that declaration by the tribunal to presume that the adult does not have capacity. So we don't um once we're appointed, we're not frequently revisiting capacity for particular individuals.
Uh section two hundred and fifty of the Guardianship and Administration Act provides that the minister is to prepare guidelines to assist persons required to make assessments about the capacity of adults to make decisions about matters, to make assessments. And are we right in understanding that in twenty twenty the Queensland Attorney General and Minister for Justice developed something called the Queensland Capacity Assessment Guidelines? Are you aware of them?
Yes.
Mister Juwan?
I know.
You weren't aware of them?
No.
Um well, I suppose the answer to my next question will be no, and that is if you're not aware of them, they don't have any application in the discharge of your functions?
Uh my staff uh would be aware of them and they would deal with some of those matters, but uh it doesn't come immediately to my attention.
And Miss Smith, you've said you are aware of them.
I am aware of them.
To what extent they are they relevant to the work that you do?
Um as I outlined, um as the tribunal has already considered capacity, the guardians would not consider that once an appointment has been made for the public guardian.
So when it comes to uh the testing, the Guardianship Act as to whether or not an adult has impaired capacity for the matter, and the matter is a particular area of decision-making. Is it the case that for both the public trustee and the public guardian that that question of assessing that a person does not have capacity or impaired capacity rests entirely with QCAT?
Probably speak to that. We, our practice is that capacity is decision-specific. So obviously, a guardian would not be involved in the day-to-day personal decisions um of the person that we um may have be appointed for. But in terms of um the areas of appointment, such as if we were appointed by QCAT for accommodation, service provision, um healthcare, we would not be making an assessment of capacity each time those, a decision needed to be made.
And for the public trustee?
So we, under our struck, new structured decision-making mo- model, which we've implemented over the last two years, we operate under uh the proviso that there is a general presumption of capacity. And then it is issue by issue specific, where effectively we go through a process of a seven-step process, which was developed by La Trobe University, and under that process, uh we determine whether ultimately uh working with the customer as to what their uh capacity is, what their preferences are. And 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 in a sense, making a decision that's different to that under s- strict processes.
When you say working with the customer to determine what their capacity is, that require you to make an assessment of what the person's capacity is to make decisions, for example, around financial affairs?
So in, it depends on the specific issue and question. Um so we do have a general presumption of capacity, but we also understand that our appointment uh in respect of some of those financial matters, um we have been appointed. Um there is a lack of capacity in respect of some of those specific matters.
Right.
Uh but we still, under our approach, we aim to empower, under our new approach, we aim to empower the customer as much as possible, even in relation to those type of decisions.
So if if i- in Queensland, you start with the presumption of capacity. Uh does that presumption mean that regardless of what the decision is, be it small or be it significant, the assumption always is that the person, an adult person with disability, can make decisions affecting their own life to exercise dignity of risk and to have choice and control? At the starting point in Queensland for both your respective jurisdictions?
Well, we would follow, sorry, so we would follow the general principles under the legislation, which does take you through a process, which is how you just outlined that. So um yes, you would commence by um recognizing that and speaking with the person under guardianship orders around the decision that needs to be made and as, to the greatest extent possible, um supporting them in making that decision. But if that's not possible, then it takes you through uh the process, which is then being able to discuss their views and wishes, which is a path of structured decision-making, which finally leads, I guess, at the most extreme end to substitute decision.
Okay. Is that the same for the public trustee?
Our, our one is slightly different. So um uh a couple of years ago, like I said before, we um uh uh adopted the La Trobe University's um uh supportive decision-making framework, which we called the Structured Decision Making Framework, and that involves a seven-step process. And that seven-step process involves uh knowing the customer, uh defining the scope of the decision, getting the customer's wishes and preferences with a presumption that they have capacity, identifying risks and issues uh and um uh communicating with the support network. Uh then uh make, going through, at that point, we go through the structured decision-making process. Uh we make the decision and then we action the decision. So that's the process that we follow in Queensland.
Does that process speak to the principles set out in the Guardianship and Administration Act from section eleven, capital B and following?
That's correct. So it, we uh we adopted it for several reasons. Uh first of all, it align, obviously, to the principles under the Australian Law Reform Commission. It aligned with the convention uh on the right of people with disabilities. And also, uh we uh we viewed it was opportune as the amendments to the Guardianship and Amendment Act were being introduced in Queensland, around the same time that the Human Rights Act was being um introduced in Queensland. Uh we, we saw the opportunity to consolidate it all as part of the um uh La Trobe University's decision-making model. Uh we work with them uh closely and we uh ad- adapted it and um brought it into Queensland. And by adapting, I simply mean we just largely just changed some terminology um uh to align with the Queensland legislation. But ultimately, we uh uh adapted it and and the steps we follow through that are uh in alignment with the general principles.
So the, the general principles, uh after starting with presumption of capacity, then move to uh a range of principles that speak directly to human rights and fundamental freedoms. And there's uh various references to human rights and fundamental freedoms. Is there in each of your um organisations a uh policy that sets out what human rights and fundamental freedoms mean for the purpose of exercising these principles under the Guardianship and Administration Act? Mister Juwan?
So we, not uh one single document, uh the, we refer to various human rights and the generous prin- uh general principles uh in various ways. First of all, in terms of our training materials.
No, it's just, before we get to the training materials, I just want to know what the understanding is of human rights and whether internally there is a policy or a document that explains what do human rights mean for your agency? And what human rights are you talking about?
So uh not a specific document per se, but it's pervasive in terms of every aspect of our training. Uh every aspect of the track, recent training we've introduced, uh policies, manuals. And a- at its core, in our decision-making frameworks, structured decision-making framework, it has been designed to enhance and uh and embed those human rights considerations.
For you personally, what do human rights mean?
So human right.
Of your job, what, what, when you use that word or that phrase, human rights, what are you actually talking about?
So it's, it's the fundamental human rights in terms of dignity, in terms of right to uh have uh one's enabled, ena- enabled rights respected and valued uh in terms of making sure that there's a right to involvement in decision-making, there's a right to involvement in uh having um their p- property uh protected, a right to privacy, a right to security, a right to a number of other things which fall under the social, economic and cultural rights. Uh and for, for me, um those are the rights that I'm required to ensure that I protect for my customers.
What, what's the content of those rights? Uh where do they come from and how do you define them? You described to.
So, so there's various human rights. So if you're talking, you know, in Queensland, we've got them in the human rights legislation. Uh some of those, uh many of those rights are reflected in the general principles uh as well. Um as that, we've got uh various uh rights, uh obviously communicated in the Convention on People on, on the right for disabilities, which has um been ratified by Australia. So those are the core rights as it applies to Queensland.
Miss Smith, in terms of the public guardian, have you taken an approach of identifying what human rights means for the functions that you have to perform?
Yes, we published, um and it's publicly available on our website, a human rights decision-making framework, which all of our staff are um trained in and expected to comply with in the carrying out of their functions. Um and how that would apply, um I guess in the day-to-day of a, of a guardian would be in that um following the decision-making process, they are required to identify if any um uh of the process or the decision itself may um infringe on a person's human rights and to consider those human rights and why that infringement may or may not be justified in the circumstances.
So again, what, when you talk about human rights, what types of rights are you talking about or what's the source of these?
Rights to au- autonomy, um rights to um to dignity, to, I mean, we have um freedom of movement. Um the, the whole range of rights in the Human Rights Act in Queensland.
All right. Now I want to move on to having uh an understanding about the number of customers. Is that the word the public trustee uses? And uh how do you describe, Miss Smith, uh people who are subject to guardianship orders? Do you have a particular expression you?
We ta- use the term clients.
Clients, so customers and clients. So for the public trustee, uh you are act as a financial administrator for presently, or whenever we ask you for the disinformation, nine thousand six hundred and thirty-five clients, that's paragraph twenty-one of your statement. And Miss Smith, yours is in paragraph twenty-seven. And you act as a guardian for three thousand five hundred and sixty-five people in Queensland. Now, are we right in understanding that both with respect to financial administration and guardianship, that uh there may be uh an appointment as a plenary, which is full powers, limited, which might be subject to the scope of the orders set by the tribunal. Or there may be circumstances for interim arrangements to be made. Are they the sort of three broad classes?
Correct.
And in terms of those numbers of nine thousand six hundred or three thousand five hundred, I'm just rounding them up. But that um together collects both plenary, limited and interim or arrangements or orders, is that right?
That's correct for, for the public trustee.
Correct.
And uh we asked you about the average time that uh the orders would re- remain in place. And uh you've said from the public trustee that the average time is fi- is six and a half years. Could you just help me understand the basis of the six and a half years? Would that apply for most people who are under a plenary or limited uh financial administration order?
Uh in terms of providing that data, we included all of our customer groups as part of that.
Okay. And uh in terms of the public guardian, you've said at paragraph thirty that ninety percent of the orders are continuing. Does that mean that they're sort of an ongoing, that the orders will be ongoing unless and until there's some application for, for a review, is that right?
Ninety-eight percent. Um I think that refers to them not um interim.
Not interim, okay. And in terms of, of continuing, do you have any, any, I don't think you were able to identify any data about what the, the average length or duration of these orders might be?
Um we weren't able to pull that um data from our system, but um my, my experience is the, the average length is increasing um with the introduction of the National Disability Insurance Scheme.
That's a topic I want to ask both of you about in a moment, if you can bear with me on that one, but just getting some of the numbers. Uh we asked you uh to identify what might be the disability that a person who's a subject to order may live with, to help understand perhaps why the orders were made. And uh Commissioners, just in the interest of time, I'll give you the references for the public trustee that set out at paragraph twenty-five to twenty-seven. And for the guardians, uh it's at paragraph thirty-two. In terms of uh guardianship, it seems that the greatest number are people with acquired brain injury followed by dementia, is that right?
Uh intellectual.
And int- and intellectual disability.
Yes.
So those three areas would be the, a sort of key areas, is that right?
Intellectual, psychiatric and acquired brain injury.
And in terms of the public trustee, you've identified a range of disability at paragraph uh twenty-four, and then at paragraph twenty-five, you've referred to age-related disability, de- developmental disability, neurological disability. And the largest group of customers are psychosocial disability, followed by other disability or no disability recorded. So do you see that, Mister Juwan, at paragraph twenty-five? In terms of psychosocial disability, if we look at the table that's immediately above, that um has a, a range of what, may I describe this way, as the types of conditions that might be found in DSM five, um reflecting a range of different psychiatric conditions, is that right?
Um yes.
And in terms of the data collected within the public trustee, are these the categories that you use to collect the data and describe the different cohorts of people, or sorry, customers um who are subject to financial administration?
Yes.
So then we asked you uh a little bit about the cohorts by reference to age and also whether they can be identified by their heritage, be it as members of the culturally and linguistically diverse community or First Nations people. I want to ask you about First Nations people. Uh the public trustee, uh you say at paragraph thirty that for First Nations people, there are eight hundred and twenty-nine First Nations people who are customers of the public trustee. And for the guardian, yours uh indicates five hundred and seventy-one. That's paragraph thirty-five of your statement. Can I ask both of you, looking at those numbers as a proportion to the population of First Nations people in Queensland, do these numbers um suggest that there's a disproportionate number of First Nations people who may be customers or clients with respect to financial administration or guardianship? Who wants to go first?
So uh in respect of uh public trustee customers, in terms of our approximately ten thousand customers, it's, yeah, our number is higher.
Is it disproportionate to the population in Queensland?
Yep.
Is there any reason for that?
Uh so uh there is uh obviously um uh significant um historical um uh cu- uh cultural um um factors that have contributed to the disadvantage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait or, or the peoples, which has led, had significant impacts in terms of um in, in terms of individual uh capacity in some matters.
It's one thing to talk about the historical context to it, but how uh does that manifest in terms of day-to-day practice and the circumstances in which the orders may be made and you have First Nations customers?
So in terms of, if I understand your question correctly, um in terms of um uh uh in terms of how it, of, from a public trustee perspective, where someone um uh uh where an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander person um uh is um is placed under an administration order, that's often um in, in our experience as a result of obviously factors relating to soc- social and other fact, uh and other disadvantaged um factors. And when they, when we become appointed as administrator, uh it's, what we do is we ensure that um you know, we are very cognizant of those factors in terms of how we try to support them in our day-to-day work.
Right. Uh Miss Smith, have you uh got a view on if there's a disproportionate number of First number of First Nations people who are subject to guardianship orders as a proportion of the community generally in Queensland?
I would agree that I do think it's a disproportionate number with, under public guardianship. And as to the reasons why, I think it's probably representative across my other functions as well, which is oversight of children in child protection. So in those systems, there seems to be an experience of particular vulnerability and an overrepresentation.
Has there been any research or evaluation undertaken within your office to identify why there might be a disproportionate number of First Nations people subject to guardianship orders?
Not within the office of the public guardian.
Neither of your organisations employs an Aboriginal liaison officer, is that right? It's paragraph forty eight of the public trustee's statement of paragraph forty three of the guardian's statement. That's right?
Correct.
Have you ever employed Aboriginal liaison officers?
Not at the office of the public guardian, but we do have identified positions. And as you'll see in my statement, we also bring all of our First Nations staff from across the agency together to to provide practice advice in the terms of our service delivery and to also provide advice on culturally appropriate language, culturally appropriate service provision, and also to have a culturally safe space as an employer.
Mr. Juana, in the public trustee.
So can I just, yeah.
Do you want to say if you've employed Aboriginal liaison officers in the past?
No, but we are developing a workplace diversity and inclusive plan. That's part of our plan, action plans over the next twelve months. But we do seek to ensure that we apply a very individualized approach where we have a high level of involvement with all of our First Nations customers and their support networks. So still we make we make decisions based on their individual cultural needs. And we place a great deal of emphasis on that under our structured decision making process.
Do you think both agencies would benefit from having Aboriginal liaison officers to work to create sort of culturally safe and culturally responsive approaches to the way in which your functions are respectively discharged?
So we're very open to that. It is one of the key things we will consider as part of our development of our diversity and inclusion action plan, but we're also thinking of other things on top of that, whether we do it all together or whether we prioritize some over others, but that's part of our action plan over the next twelve months.
Miss Smith?
Well, as I said, we do bring our staff together. We have ten across the agency who are familiar with our broad range of functions and powers to provide that advisory service, but absolutely would be open to if there are additional benefits from a liaison officer. Absolutely.
Before, I was, well, I'll ask this question now. Do you have any information, and if you don't, you can take this on notice, of how many First Nations staff are employed in your respective offices?
So at the public trustee, we have seven.
Out of?
Out of six hundred and six.
A disproportionately low number.
That's correct. And hence the reason for the action plan we're developing.
And Miss Smith?
Eleven out of over three hundred staff, three hundred and twenty staff.
So it's slightly higher than the trustees' proportion. What about staff who identifies people living with disability? Do you have any information in terms of the number of employees who identifies people with disability?
So at the public trustee, it's thirty seven.
Thirty seven out of?
Six hundred and six.
The office of the public guardian, it's ten, but it's some voluntary to provide the information and under half of our staff have elected to volunteer.
And it's the same with the public trustee.
And that's why I've asked you the question in terms of identification. I want to come back then to the NDIS and both of you have addressed the way in which the NDIS rollout and the way in which the NDIS now operates in Queensland as having a bearing on the numbers of orders that may be made. For the public trustee, this is set out at paragraph thirty four, thirty five. And I want to ask you, Mr. Juana, in a moment, about what you've said in paragraph eighty four on the Disability Services Officers Unit. And for Miss Smith, you've also commented on the impact of the NDIS at paragraph eighty seven of your statement. Miss Smith, can I ask you, what have you seen in terms of trends over the time you have had the role of deputy acting and now public guardian in relation to the NDIS changing the trends or making a difference?
Well, it's had a, it's had a huge impact on the office of the public guardian in terms of not only increased number of people coming under public guardianship, but also the work guardians doing supporting decisions. There, the system, as you well know, as people, the general view is, is highly complex. And there are frequent and regular ongoing decisions that need to be made. Also, the complexity of that work and those decisions has increased. So we, it, our experience has been that people probably were on average of orders about two years prior to the commencement of the NDIS, but we're seeing those orders by the tribunal now made for longer. And that's due to the ongoing need of constant plan reviews and you know, being able to actually implement and exercise the choice and control and the decisions that need to be made to support that.
Are these circumstances in which the guardianship orders made for the convenience of those providing services or for the convenience of the NDIS participant?
I would say there is a mix. Early on, when the scheme was first rolling out, we were seeing large, large bulk numbers of applications being made for the appointment of guardian. And that that was to make sure, there was a view that the public guardian would be able to assist people to enter the scheme because of the complexity. Some, some of our clients did have family in their lives and just to the sheer, I guess, volume of information and needing to understand how to navigate that system, that they did support the appointment of the public guardian for their family member. And I think that definitely there could be an element early on of convenience because we did see a cultural view from the NDA planners early on that it was easier to deal with another government agency, but we have seen that shift over time when there's definitely been more understanding around decision making support and what guardianship is.
Mr. Juana, in terms of the public trustee, you've also seen a trend or some changes as a result of the NDIS. And one of the matters that you've addressed in your statement, it starts at paragraph eighty four, is the disability support officer unit. And you've said this unit takes a lead role in liaising with the NDA and support coordinators, acting as a conduit between the public trustee, the NDA and disability support providers. What can you tell us about when and why this disability support officer unit was developed?
So it was, as I understand, it was developed approximately three years ago. And the reason was to ensure that we provided the best level of support for our customers, obviously with the disability. It was also developed because it is a complex area. And, and we wanted to ensure that there was some expert advice and support for our staff who deal with customers on a day to day basis. So essentially, it's a consultancy and referral and facilitation service which assists our customers and our frontline officers in terms of making sure that so far as possible, there's high levels of awareness about the NDIS, a high levels of training and, and and involvement in complex matters, so as to ensure that customers' best outcomes are achieved.
Can I ask you now about this issue of the duration of the orders? And we've spoken about that a little bit earlier. We've also asked you about the occasions in which orders are revoked. And the public trustees, paragraph forty two, says, I think in the financial year, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, hope that's right, that there were a hundred and sixty six orders revoked. But they, there was fifty six of them where new administrators were appointed. Can I ask you this? Is there a system in place for the periodic review of any financial administration order that may be made by the tribunal?
So not, not necessarily by the public trustee, but that's one of the things we have done as part of introducing the Financial Independence Pathway. And more recently, we've introduced and engaged with QAI and developed a partnership where we do actually assist customers through QAI to seek to revoke orders.
So there's no sort of internal policy or practice within the public trustee to say, we need to review on an annual basis whether the?
So that, that's, I apologize about interrupting you there. So, so we do that on an individual basis under our structured decision making framework. So under our structured decision making framework, we do, you know, the first principle is know your customer. And as part of that process, if the trust officer is able to identify that they do have capacity, options are offered, options are offered in terms of going and seeking revocation, going through the Financial Independence Pathway. And as part of that, you know, more recently, linking them up with QAI in terms of doing that. But most of those things have been recent as part of our process and reforms over the last two years, moving from substitute towards a more supportive decision making model.
Just, we looked earlier at the sort of cohorts, we looked at psychosocial disability. And if we, and I'm putting a hypothetical to you, if you assume that for some people who identify with psychosocial disability, particularly those acute, those acute situations, have you addressed the issue of fluctuating capacity and built that into a review process in the framework that you're talking about?
So that framework is a holistic framework. So we adopted it based on it being recognized as best practice in terms of that approach. So our perspective is it's a holistic approach that we consider all of the circumstances of the customer, including the issue you just mentioned.
So that means it's sort of not something separate to identify a concept of fluctuating capacity and being able to react or address fluctuating capacity?
So for us, you know, it's no separate policies per se or procedures per se in relation to those things. For us, those type of things are addressed through those three mechanisms I talked to you just before.
Now, Miss Smith, I apologize if I've got this wrong. I couldn't see, but I may have missed it in your statement, whether there have been any revocations of guardianship orders?
Paragraph thirty nine.
Thank you. In terms, let me just turn that up. So that was the three hundred and sixty, is that right? Three hundred and sixty three of the orders revoked. Are you able to assist us as to why orders may have been revoked? And again, is there any process of systematic review to enable QCAT to sort of revisit whether the ongoing guardianship orders are appropriate?
Well, it's really up to individual guardians who are most familiar with the circumstances of the decisions needing to be made and the client's circumstances. So they would really, at the guardian level, drive that revocation process if they believe that it's appropriate to do so. We also periodically put on extra resources to dedicate to that process. So guardians, because it is a resourcing and time intensive process, we do add on resources, we call them for the revocation, for the, for the specific purpose of revocation. And the guardians throughout our offices in Queensland can refer particular clients to them to look at their circumstances and undertake that work. And we would also do it periodically for appointments such as where we're appointed for a person's legal matters. So if that legal matter has finished and there's no further need for the guardian to be involved in that person's life, we would seek a revocation.
So that, that would be the limited orders. So you might be what, be a litigation guardian? Is that right?
No, we, it's a personal matter. So we can be appointed for a person's legal matters, not including property or finance. And that could include criminal matters, whether a parent in child protection proceedings, other family court matters.
Now, one question that I wanted to turn to now, and it arises from some of the evidence presented at this hearing so far, and a very strong theme arising out of the submissions that the Royal Commission's received. And that is that when a person may have an administrator or guardian appointed, they may have no contact with that person. And they may have no interpersonal relationship with them. And they've said to us, how can a person make decisions about me in my best interest if they don't know me? They don't speak to me. They never come and see where I live. And they really don't have much sense about what my choices in life might be in relation to the money that I might want to spend. So we asked you about the contacts that the officers in your respective offices have. For the public trustee, you don't keep any data on the average time of contact with customers. Is that right?
So we do have contact with a customer on average, one every, once every eight days. But in terms of specific details, no.
And if the, if an administrator is appointed, then the policy is that within the first week of that appointment, there'll be contact with the client, or the customer.
Yeah, that's right. So we've established what we call client liaison officers. So once we're appointed, there's a contact in the first week, then within the first two weeks, there's a meeting. That meeting can be face to face. It can be by way of video or it can be over the telephone. Often that depends on the availability, the preference of the customer. Then after that, you know, there's a range of other activities. But for us fundamentally, one of the things we wanted to ensure as part of our reforms over the last two years is that there is a lot more direct communication. So that's one of the reasons for this structured decision making framework that we have, because we try to involve as part of our new process. And it's early, but the signs are encouraging of actually communicating with the customer and getting their wishes and preferences. And sometimes that means, and I apologize for going on for a bit, but sometimes that means agreeing on things beforehand. So you don't necessarily have to come back for some of those things.
So the public trustee is self funded. And so is it the case that any contact of this kind every eight days with the customer is also the subject of some fee? Is there a fee attached?
So our fee arrangements are, in terms of the legislation, under the regulation, they are in part based on the level of contact, but they're also based on the level of service that we provide. It is not the motivation of the public trustee to try to increase contact with a view to increasing fees.
Could we get an answer to that actual question? Does, does the, every contact every eight days, do those contacts result in a charge?
And no. So what we have is a fee system. It's outlined in the Public Service Regulation where depending on the level of contact. where uh de- depending on the level of contact, uh there's a uh there's a fee set, but that is actually set based on the service. So for example, if a customer is living in uh uh in a, in an aged care home and the level of contact is once uh more than once per week, there's a set fee, but if it's more than once per week, there's another fee. So that's basically how the fee system is set.
Right, uh in turning to the guardian, you've said at paragraph sixty one of your statement that the data for September twenty twenty two showed that forty three percent of clients had been visited in person once in the last twelve months. Can I ask you to explain that a little more? Does that mean that uh there are a lot of people who have not been visited at all? Or is this?
No, just in the last twelve months, so that would be face to face.
Right.
Um, but obviously we um have communication through other means much more regularly.
Uh, you you'd accept, wouldn't you, that um telephone or online communication is one thing, but face to face is different?
Absolutely.
And I think you were here this morning when uh you heard the Namoc family talk about from a culturally safe perspective, um and a culturally respective uh respect perspective, that face to face is the preference?
Absolutely, and it would be our preference as well. It is purely a resourcing challenge for us to be able to do it more frequently.
What's what's the nature of that resourcing challenge? Is it not having people with appropriate skills in the office to discharge this? Or is it high caseloads where it's just not possible?
It's it's the high caseloads where it becomes very difficult to take time out of the office for those periods of time. Queensland's a large place, as you are aware of, and there's significant travel involved.
Well, that anticipates my next question, and that is uh in terms of your respective offices, are you centralized in Brisbane or do you have offices across the state?
So for the public trustee, we have a central office in Brisbane, but we also have fifteen regions.
And for the guardian?
Um, in the Office of the Public Guardian, we have um an office in Brisbane, in Ipswich, in Townsville and in Cairns.
Now, I am conscious of the time, so what I'm going to do is just go to a few issues which reflect some of the systemic issues raised uh over the course of this hearing and what the commissioners heard. One, which is an issue for the public trustee, is the issue of conflict of interest. And you're aware of Ms. Nunn's case, and I've said I don't need you to comment on it. Uh, the Chair asked some questions earlier today about whether there can be an inherent conflict if the public trustee has the responsibility and the function of drafting wills, but also responsibilities to act as an administrator for a person with disability, and that that may cause the public trustee to give some consideration to what I might call, from the New South Wales perspective, family provisions application. There is an inherent conflict, is there not?
So it at the uh public trustee, under section one thirty seven of the Public Trustee Act, uh there is recognition that the public trustee performs multiple roles, and that's not only Queensland, that's every uh public trustee across Australia. And uh what we do at the public trustee is we ensure that there are strict information barrier approaches as part of that. It is something that is uh captured as part of our training. Uh, we do treat it very seriously. Uh 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 staff member, they have separate roles. Uh but a staff member who is performing an administrator function is not uh uh under any circumstances authorised to access information in regard to, regarding to, for example, testator uh functions. Uh if that occurs, it is referred to our integrity function and is dealt with as part of that process.
So it's one thing to have that provision in the legislation, but it's another in terms of the public's perception and trust and confidence in the public trustee. But there seems to be is a conflict of interest. It's very difficult from the public's perspective to say, we don't really understand this legislation, but it looks a bit bit odd if you're going to draft and prepare wills, but also then seek to challenge tho- those wills as well.
So we do have very strict information barrier approaches. Uh, we do uh where, for example, there is a family provision exa- um uh application involves multiple people. Uh, we do have a a practice direction within the public trustee, which we adhere to very strongly. Uh, it's a di- uh it's um a separate uh trust officer that deals with it, a separate lawyer, a separate director that they report to, often in separate regions. Uh, you know, the files are allocated to. So it is uh as as part of me coming into the organisation and looking at it, you know, having reviewed uh the protocols that were put in place, I'm satisfied with it, but obviously open to further feedback in terms of any uh further opportunities for improvement.
Is that a public, is that a public document?
Uh, no.
How would any member of the public know anything about it?
Um, so um that's, that's a good question. Uh, we do as part of our uh communications with our customers. Uh, uh, I understand we do advise that um in terms of uh there are information barriers and different functions perform different roles, but in terms of access to that document, no, that's not publicly. And so uh so that's not publicly available.
Well, if it's not publicly available, the question that Ms. Eastman asked you was about perceptions. How on earth could anybody dealing with the public trustee in that situation have any confidence that there was not a conflict of interest? You can't, on the one hand, I would have thought, claim to be imposing uh these uh Chinese walls and expect people to uh accept that as a reasonable way of dealing with an inherent conflict of interest and yet not publish the rules or principles under which you're operating.
So we're very happy.
Sorry, I don't, I don't understand it.
So we're very happy to consider that. It's something um uh that hasn't been brought to my attention or or myself have hadn't put my mind to, but very happy to review and consider that.
Isn't it ob- isn't it obvious?
It's something I uh uh hasn't been brought to my intention or I hadn't personally considered it, I wasn't aware. Uh, I hadn't put my mind to that issue, but very happy to uh review that and consider that.
Hmm. Yes.
Um, mindful of the time, the commissioners may have some questions. I wanted to ask you about an issue that Ms. Nunn spoke about today, and that's accountability and the importance of our public institutions being accountable, that when things go wrong, respond, people take responsibility for uh the actions. And one of the issues that arises with accountability is the extent to which there are very strong confidentiality and secrecy provisions in the legislation around what happens at a tribunal proceeding. And then that sense of confidentiality that cloaks the customer or the client. I'm not asking you to comment on legislation, and I accept that you may be limited in what you can say in terms of legislative reform. But I can I ask you both this question? Do you accept that the secrecy and confidentiality provisions uh operate in a way where the power disparity between the client or the customer and your respective agencies is enormous? It is a vast power disparity. Would you agree with that?
So if I can answer that, I I think the nature of guardianship administration itself is uh is an issue of power, a- and there are significant power discrepancies. Uh, we aim to ensure that as part of our reforms over the last two years, that we do try to empower the customer as much as possible as part of our process. So hence, what we've tried to do is to ensure that they have a greater voice through our structured decision making framework, and also to ensure that um they have pathways to challenge uh their order. And in addition, what we've introduced a customer advocate, which is a first for the sector, which is uh designed to provide an inherent tension within the organisation and a and a voice, an advocacy voice for the customer so as to ensure that, you know, some of those power imbalances are addressed where there is an issue.
What about external accountability? Uh, who is the watchdog over the public trustee?
So in terms of uh external watchdogs, uh you know, we've got obviously the Ombudsman, we've got the triple C, we've got the Human Rights Commission, we've got the courts. Uh, our accountability to the customers and uh themselves. Uh, we've also got the Integrity Commissioner, Information Commissioner. Uh, we've also got relevant regulatory bodies, depending on the various functions that we perform, be it in financial services, the the Legal Profession Act. So there is a high level of external uh accountability. Uh, we welcome accountability and transparency. And and from our perspective, it's really important to be responsive to those issues. And that's part of our reforms over the last two years, trying to be responsive to those things and trying to ensure that we implement uh uh initiatives that support those things. Uh, we've uh introduced um recently a service improvements uh report, which highlights the range of reforms we have done in relation to transparency and governance. Uh, I think uh when you consider the level of transparency externally that a public trustee is subject to as opposed to a private administrator, plus the layers and layers of internal accountability we've introduced, particularly over the last two years. I I I think there's strong governance, but I always welcome a consideration of more because uh from my perspective, I've spent twenty years in government advancing those issues. So it's something I'm not objecting to at all.
Are the customer advocates employees of the public trustee?
That's right. So so the reason we created the position was um to ensure that there's not only external systems or external pressures for improvement, there's internal pressures as well. Uh, so that there's always someone outside the normal reporting line that is raising um issues and concerns regu- regarding the voice of the customer. So that's what the customer advocate uh has been doing. And as part of its injec- uh uh that function injecting itself in various matters, we've seen additional um matters go to before Q C A and orders get revoked. We've seen customers um a bit a bit moving out of aged uh care and moving back into their home. So we have that as an inherent part of our business. DNA, it's in this early stages. But what we're seeing is uh when you factor in this supported decision making framework, uh uh when you factor in the customer advocate, the Financial Independence Pathway, the improvements to our complaint system, it is early in terms of the reforms we're doing. Um, but what we're seeing is some early encouraging signs. Our Ombudsman complaints have gone down by forty percent. Uh, the number of complaints requiring remedial action have reduced from thirty one percent to six percent. Um, we've established also a customer reference group where key advocacy groups uh represent the voices of customers. Uh, and their general feedback is they are noticing significant cultural changes at the public trustee, but they're also a- advising us, you know, more work needs to be done, and we're very cognizant of that. Uh, so those type of signs for us, plus the cultural osmosis, I suppose, that has occurred in terms of sup- uh introducing um, you know, the Latrobe decision model. Um, you know, we are seeing really some really early encouraging signs in terms of that path.
Do do all of these reforms predate the ABC Four Corners report?
Uh, many of them do.
And has there been any additional reforms or actions taken since the Four Corners program?
So uh for example, um the um uh the advocacy pathway referral, uh which we've uh partnered with Q A I in terms of uh implementing that. So that's been one example. Um, there's um been greater levels of transparency in terms of some of our fees and charges. Uh, but um yeah, they're the immediate things that come to mind.
You when uh you've talked a little bit about the training earlier, and there's a lot of detail. But one thing you've told us is that there's no training within the public trustee about the CR P D. Why is that?
Um, so uh our um interpretation thus far has been that many of the um principles, obviously not all, um uh of uh the um CR P D are encapsulated in the Human Rights Act, are encapsulated in the general principles. So the structured decision.
Are you sure, sorry, forgive me for interrupting, are you sure about that?
Um, I I think s- some of the main ones. Uh, I think obviously this uh the declaration in terms of substitute decision making, I understand that.
Well, tell tell me how reasonable adjustments and reasonable accommodations are included in the general.
So uh uh from our perspective, um as some, uh the way we apply it is that in terms of the structured decision making framework, uh the decision is uh, you know, a decision is made in accordance with the uh customer's wishes uh to the extent possible.
Sorry to interrupt, I'm not asking about customers' wishes. I'm asking about the CR P D's requirements around a reasonable accommodation. Can you tell me how they apply to general human rights?
So uh I can't in terms of specifics, but what I can say is, as I said before, mi- uh a number of them or a a a lot, you know, a significant number of them, and not all of them, I acknowledge that.
And these are the reasons why there's been no training on the CR P D, is that right?
Well, uh, from our perspective, um uh we've sought to, and we've relied heavily on the advice of Latrobe University in terms of their decision making framework being the large driver of what we do. So we do provide training in regard to um the general principles and the human rights. In terms of the um a CR P D, uh the the customer advocate is developing a charter, and that charter will be based on the CR P D. And the way and the forward plan is that the customer advocate will be holding the organisation in terms of against those standards, that charter, which will be based on the CR P D. That's that's our plans in terms of moving forward on that issue.
Is the customer advocate, assuming that's one person, a person?
So the office has uh four staff.
And are tho- any of those four staff, are they people with dis- who live with disability?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Um, Miss Smith, can I come back to the question which I started with, which is that that sense that we have uh heard from the evidence of a very significant power disparity that is brought about by the confidentiality and secrecy provisions in the law? What's your view about that?
Um, I think you heard earlier from Q A I that Queensland Public Advocate has recommended reform um to section one one four A of the Guardianship and Administration Act. Um, despite what's been reported in the media, we did not oppose um those um suggested amendments. We did um support a carve out or or an amendment to the provision. So people um subject to those proceedings should absolutely be able to um disclose their their private circumstances and should be supported to do so. Where we provided caution was a wholesale appeal um because we have used, utilized that provision in circumstances um where someone has had malicious intent to about publishing um that information to identify a person who is a client of the Office of the Public Guardian.
Can I thank you both um for quite a long time in the witness box, so to speak, this afternoon, but also for the detail provided in your respective statements and accompanying material? Uh, the commissioners may have some questions, thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I'll ask first Commissioner Ryan whether he has any questions.
Thank you. Um, could I ask first of all a couple of questions to the public trustee? You have used the expression structured decision making quite a bit um during your evidence this afternoon. I was just, in order to understand that better, could I say, let it, let us imagine that the public trustee was about to make a decision of discussing someone's expensive accommodation with them, that they were worried that they may no longer continue to be able to live in that accommodation, and they had to have some sort of a discussion with them? How would you apply the seven step uh structured decision model to um say a decision like that?
Uh, so the decision as to where to live, we don't make that decision. So it's the customer, uh and it's.
But you have had discussions with people about the cost of their accommodation and asked them, even suggested that they might move. So, well, let's say a person's budget, I'm really trying to, I've got the issue.
Yep.
I'm trying to work out how does this structured decision making apply to something like um how a person's budget?
Sure, so in terms of, so if I can perhaps give a context in regard to a First Nations um customer. Um, so uh for uh in terms of um that example. So whereas before, under a substitute decision making model, we would largely make the decision. Under this approach, we might have a situation where a um the son of a um.
Could you show me how the?
Could you show me how the seven steps work? So 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 my apologies, I was just lying, laying the context. Um, so the son might want. Um, to uh the our customer to buy them a car. Um, so First Nations customer. So in that situation, uh, we get to know the customer. Step one is get to know your customer. And that includes knowing um who they are, their wishes and preferences, their cultural circumstances. And um and and their goals and aspirations. Step two is to really define. Uh, the question and the issue and and the need. So in this instance, the son wanting. To use resources of our customer to purchase a car for themselves. Step three is to get to know uh the uh the wishes and preferences of the customer. Um, and hence, you know, we do engage directly with the customer in terms of, you know, are they agreeable to that? Uh, you know, what do they want? Do they have a different view? Um, so we get the wishes and views of the customer. Then we look, uh, so uh, so in this instance, um, for example. The customer determined they were very comfortable with their son getting that because as um uh uh and and then. Uh, w- we then looked at the risks and uh and any issue and issues or problems in terms of that. So obviously there was an impact on um on the budget of of our customer. Um, and it was a significant amount, but you know, as part of that, we consulted some. Somewhat further with the customer, with their broader support network uh and family. And through that process, we determined that actually the son, uh with our customer going into an aged home. Um, the son is performing a leadership role in the family in terms of supporting the other children. Uh, as part of that, and then that plus our customers' wishes ha- helped us uh to inform the decision. And now in terms of our decision, what we do have, we classify those decisions in terms of uh three levels. Level A is a simple decision, level B is a moderately complex decision, and level C is a complex decision, and we have templates. For those types of decisions, so as to ensure that the greater the complexity, the more thought and consideration is put. In terms of human rights and those factors, and we've got detailed templates which require, and those matters are escalated to more senior officers as. Uh, more complexities involved, and it requires them to consider all those issues of human rights. Of all those general general principles in detail, and then as part of that process, there's a structured decision-making process. To comply with the legislation. In that instance, we supported it, then it was uh that was the decision. And then the last step was actioning the decision, and then that was communicating it, uh putting in steps in place and. Uh, a a merely uh sort of uh contingency plans in terms of the impact on the customer's budget. And then uh 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 that was, and documenting all of it, and that was, I suppose. Uh, in in a step-by-step process, how we go about it. Um, the.
I think Commissioner Ryan, since that was a six-minute answer to the question, we're coming to the end of questions, so one very brief question, please. And one that is capable of a brief answer.
Well, I hope so. Um, look, I'm looking at the fees that you've charged. There is a reference to something called a hardship clause. I do notice that among the fees that you charge, it's quite possible that someone on a disability support pension could wind up. Um, having to pay from ten to thirty-seven percent of their income um from the DSP. How frequently would that happen? So, um, the, there was a a report done into the public trustees' fees and charges by both the public advocate. And more recently by Price Waterhouse Coopers. Both reports, even though there were some criticisms in the first one. Uh, found that um the public trustees' fees and services were re- uh. Were little to none for the majority of financial management customers. Uh, the Price Waterhouse Coopers report found. That uh in uh overall, we actually charge a lot less than what it costs us in terms of our fees and charges. For our financial administration customers. Uh, so uh generally the fees are based on uh the level of. Uh, uh, or assets and so on, so the higher the assets. Chairman asked us to be quick.
So my apologies.
Can I direct you to the question? Is it frequent that someone on the disability support pension would be losing from fifteen to thirty-seven percent of it? So, uh, so the, it depends on what their other assets are. So if they have high levels of assets, it does have a factor on their disability support pension, and for some customers, yes.
Commissioner McKeown.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, one question for each. Uh, to the public guardian, I want to understand your response to Ms Eastman's question about presumption. Of capacity. If I understood you correctly, you said you accept QCAT decision of that person to not have capacity. Is that correct? Is that how you operate?
Well, we don't assess capacity, so we do start with a presumption of capacity because the legislation under the general principles. Does require, or does state that, but we aren't um undertaking, I guess, assessments of capacity. In terms of the ministerial guidelines or what a medical professional or other professional would be doing.
So QCAT make the determination that a person did not have capacity. Do you work with that? Client to move away from that presumption?
Um, you mean in terms of building capacity in in decision-making? Uh, no, I would say. We would be doing that through um the, I guess, the. The general decision-making functions that we have at the moment, so we don't have a specific function that um. Where we would, in addition to working with our clients in in the range of decisions that need to be um. Made in their lives and supported, we don't have an additional function. We wouldn't undertake additional capacity building. It would just be what um we do in in um all of the decisions that need to be made. So just through that natural, um, I guess, service delivery, we would be involving them in those decisions. Exploring the decisions, talking about the options um and the choices and the consequences. And through that, hopefully, capacity would be built, but we don't have a separate programme to deliver that, if that, if that answers your question.
More or less, I'm conscious of time, um, we might leave it there. My question to the public trustee is. With your disability support office unit, you said that you provide ex- would I, that unit provides expert advice to um. The, the customers. How many of the staff in that unit have a disability?
Uh, uh, my understanding is um, uh, none of the staff have a disability, but. Uh, they're trained occupational therapists.
So if I'm correct in understanding, none of the staff in that unit have a disability, and yet you say you provide expert advice on disability. Would you not agree with the proposition that disabled people are the best expert in disability?
I think, excuse me. I think lived experience is enormously important in terms of guiding and providing expert advice to. Uh, uh, policy and to government, and uh we have a number of other mechanisms where we try to get um. Lived experience advice, but uh I I take the member's point.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mr Juhan, um. When the public trustee is appointed pursuant to an administration order, is the public trustee under fiduciary obligations to the people you call customers?
Uh, yes, we are.
What does that mean?
So for us, it means a relationship of trust where we put the interests of the customer before uh ourselves and avoiding conflicts of interest.
Precisely. Thank you very much. Um, thank you for your evidence. Thank you for the detail, the statements that we have uh received. Uh, the uh Royal Commission appreciates the assistance that you have provided. Thank you. Ms Eastman, does that conclude the evidence for today?
Uh, it does. I just need to do the tenders for that.
Certainly.
Afternoon, so in relation to the public trustee of Queensland. If you could take Mr Juhan's statement and mark it exhibit thirty point zero five two.
Yes.
And for Ms Smith and the public guardian of Queensland, there's a statement and a number of accompanying documents. Which I'm sorry, Ms Smith, we didn't get time to look at today, but um if they could be marked exhibit thirty point. Zero five three through to thirty point zero six one.
Yes, the documents uh to which Ms Eastman referred may be admitted into evidence, and they will have the exhibit numbers to which Ms Eastman has referred. Thank you.
Thank you, too. And that concludes the evidence, and um and I thank the public trustee and public guardian for participating. This afternoon, and I hope all being well will resume at ten AM tomorrow.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, we'll adjourn then until ten AM tomorrow. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.